Town meeting, the town clerk has informed me that we have a quorum, we met our quorum, rather, of 50 people at last count. I declare the 2021 annual town meeting in session. Yay, indeed, it's been a long year. Welcome to the Massachusetts Boy Scout Troop 90 color guard as they proceed from the back to the front. For those who are able or wish to do so, please rise. Our invocation will be read by a Long Meadow resident with a long history of service to our region and our town. Long Meadow resident John Shuttleworth, in his capacity as the Appalachian Mountain Club Berkshire chapter and board of directors for Western Massachusetts chapter, organized the first ever Corps of Trail Clearing of the Appalachian Trail in Massachusetts and did the work himself, too. The town has appreciated his dedicated service as a Long Meadow vote counter for well over a decade. He says for me to introduce him as the mountain man, so I do that, too.
The old man of the mountains.
The old man of the mountains.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. We have come together in civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself. We have come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is an immense gap between saying, "I am right," and saying, "I believe I am right," and that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and high as our own. And let us always remember that, in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you. For our pledge of allegiance, I welcome Fay DeZaro. Fay is a sophomore at Long Meadow High School, and she started Face Masks by Fay this year, a handmade face mask business. When she isn't sewing or sewing masks or busy with baking, she does musical theater. So please, welcome Fay for the pledge of allegiance.
Hi. What? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kindly remain standing for an offer a moment of silence to remember and honor veterans who have sacrificed for our country and all those who have perished this year due to COVID. Thank you. The National Anthem, Star Spangled Banner, will now be performed by the three students to my left, Amelia Ray on violin, Evelyn Orefev violin, and Alex Lam cello. Thank you so much. We really appreciated that. And I understand the scouts are free to go? Are you all set? I think so. Thank you to our Boy Scouts, and you may sit down. Yep, of course. Yep.
Thank you.
You are all set. Thank you. This way or that way? Probably that way. Okay. Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Good job. Just watch him on the steps, please. Thank you. I now recognize the select board chair, Tom LaCusa, for the board, committee, and employee recognition. Mr. LaCusa.
Okay. Thank you, moderator. This is a long list because it includes folks from the last year also who would retire their left service with the town. So I will read the names. Erin Kobler, Shava Cohen, Beverly Parker, Marilyn Hurst, Ernest Welker, 14 years. William Sejri, Beverly Herschhorn, Carol Steiner, Anne Marie Reed, Jackie Sullivan, 15 years. Dave Martinelli, Joseph Magnani, Matt Lennon, Ryan Gesparney, Peter Mazras, David Charco, Robert Gammoldy, Trevor Doyle, John Zelizas, Mario Maza, Chaya Kosovsky, three years. Captain Carl Lenak, 2020. Lieutenant Jason Mele, 2020. F.F. Robert Taylor, 2021. Ed Klein, 39 years. Ashley Carroll, two years. Marissa O'Brien. Marina Blanovska. Carly Bennett. Megan Palmer. Ashley Hassett. Shelby Morset. Elizabeth Eastbrook. Ann Barnard. Karen Fitzgivens. Talia Emery. Dion Green. Melissa Danahay. Police Department Chief John Stankowitz retired 38 years of service. Captain Gary Fontaine retired 32 years of service. Sergeant Andrew Fullerton, 32 years of service. Officer Scott Mira retired 32 years of service. Officer Jack Jason, 32 years of service. Officer Jeffrey Myers, 13 years of service. Dispatcher Kerry Weiskopf retired 20 years of service. Dispatcher Nancy Bennett retired 19 years of service. Dispatcher Adam Sandler retired 13 years of service. Dispatcher Nathan Higgins retired five years of service. Dispatcher Sean Montagna retired two years of service. Select Board Town Managers Office, Debbie House. Stores Library, Gina Coletti. Treasurer Collector Office, Cheryl Kudnick, 23 years. And volunteers who served in 2019 and 2020. Elizabeth Bone. Cameron Curran Burke. Donna Burl. Stephen Burl. Pam Chandler. Andrew Chason. Mary Connors. Colleen Cummings. Don Gaffney. Marta Govinville. Cynthia Gorden. Carla Gunn. Louisa Gunn. Pat Yorzak. Elizabeth Kennedy. Stephen Kennedy. Ed Klein. Tommy Lee. Christopher Mahoney. Carolyn Marchesi. David Martinelli. Lumenita Marinescu. Katie McDonald. Vincent McPartland. Moya Murphy. Cole Norman. Christopher Evey. Jose J.J. Rodriguez. David Russell. John Shuttleworth. Maxim Tornuskin. Thomas Townsend. Ann Welch. Garrett Welch. Barbara Winnick. Kenny White. And Margaret Woodworth. And then from the school department, we have a separate list. On the top of the list, Armand Ray, who was on the school committee and did his two-year term. The next on the list, Karen Pelosi, a kindergarten teacher from Center School who retired 43 years of service, and she was a classmate of mine. So basically, she graduated from Springfield College and has worked there ever since. I think that's a record, 43 years, it's got to be. And then we have a lot of other retirements. Teresa Anderson. Renee Brown. Harriet Fazand. Karen Catus. James Quinn. Diane Translet. Mary Peters. Dale Scoura. Lorraine Veselkopolis. Christopher Pratt. Paul Griffin. Carla Drake. Bethane Sawyer. Lisa Russell. Ann Waldhouse. Lori Ferrara. And Adam Winski. And Lisa Gore was deceased. Tricia Ripton. Heather Cosell. Mary Ann Farrell. Joy Stacy Boquino. Cara Dudik. Giselle Rose Burrows. Laura Fitzgerald. Susan Cornell. Mary O'Neal. Erin Rugiano. Hillary Gooden. Nicholas St. George. Rita Hawker. Sarah Harrelson. Carol Connery. Mary Ann Waslawski. Mark Gravlin. Jed Boucher. Donna Young. Deborah Mills. Susan Turkot. Michael Smith. Suzanne Higgins. Linda Atkin. Nancy Hayes. Nancy Lynn Meyer. Cynthia Tobitzer. Teresa Exopolis. Maria Goldman, or Margaret Goldman. Carissa Lizant. Lynn Marioni. Mary Southwood. Marilyn Abbott. Carla Zukowski. Karen Shapaya. Mary Ellen Fazio Galan. Michelle Hansen. Ethan Grant. Brittany Galarno. Daniel Moore. Taylor Fialm. Neil Giles. Lisa Calvanes. Amanda Alliston. Nicholas Miller. Sarah Sears. Christine Torini. Rachel Kevinary. Lana Cotton. Megan Donovan. Maria Goodman. Lindsay Wansung. And Andrea Prokop. Please thank all these folks for their service and years of service to the town as either workers or volunteers. Please give them a hand.
So it's now my pleasure to again welcome Select Board Chair Thomas LaCusa for the Citizen of the Year presentation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It was a hard decision. We had a lot of good applicants, and we did it with a new committee this year, but the committee did just as good a job as the previous committees. So first of all, we came up with two, one individual and one group, because they went above and beyond, of course. The first would be presented to Marie Angelitis. If you would please stand, Marie. She's right back here. Many of you know Marie. She's been on the Select Board. She was here for nine years. I didn't get the letter that was sent, but I think we all know how hard she worked for all parties involved in our town. She was a major force in this building being put together and the adults center being put together. She did a lot of revisions to our town charter that will last a long time, and we can't thank her enough. So Marie, I'd like to give you this. Thank you.
Just want to say it was an honor working with some wonderful employees here in town and literally hundreds of volunteers. That's what makes this town work and a beautiful town to live in and to work for. And right now, there's applications up for boards and committees. It might seem like a lot of work, but once you get into it, you really see what a rewarding experience it was. So thank you very much for allowing me to serve the town for nine years.
And our second award goes to a group of very courageous individuals who, in spite of all the warnings and concerns about COVID-19, they never hesitated to do their job. They are out there Monday through Friday doing what they always do and probably not thinking much about the danger, but just thinking, "Oh, this is my job. I have to do it. People are counting on me." And so the Select Board Citizen of the Year Award also goes to 2020 Meals on Wheels drivers for many years of outstanding service to towns and villages. If we have any drivers, if they could stand up. I know we couldn't have them all here. We're going to try to have another ceremony, but thank you for your hard work.
Congratulations to both sets of winners. So a few housekeeping rules. I'll try to go through them somewhat quickly here. Many of you know what they are. To any first-time voters and any visitors in the back, I offer a special welcome. In the event of a fire alarm or emergency, the exits are clearly marked, behind the back and back behind me, but I assure you that Fire Chief Dearborn or Police Chief Starks will come to the front and alert you as to the directions that we're supposed to go in, heaven forbid there's an emergency. So welcome to our Department of Public Works. We're going to do some public work here. We're going to plow through the warrant as best we can. I'm sorry the jokes are just going to write themselves, and you don't have to laugh, but I appreciate you putting up with me. I thank the new director, Jeff McAlmond, and the facilities director for getting the building ready for us on short notice. You are sitting where trucks would be. Please be on the lookout for announcements about the June grand opening event, so consider this a soft opening. While the town won't be able to offer tours today, sorry, they will for the grand opening event, and it will be in June. Thanks also to our emergency manager, management director, John Dearborn, for his coordination work on the rain issue, and I assure you the rain is coming. At some point. Should we need to hear from any non-voters with expertise or specialized knowledge of a project before town meeting, I will permit some non-voters to speak, and they have already been approved as town employees regarding issues related to their departments. No non-voters have received prior permission to speak. Of course, the superintendent of schools and other department heads may speak on matters related to their departments. The back of the warrant contains the rules of the procedure that we'll follow. They come from Mass General Laws, the town charter, our bylaws, and Town Meeting Time, our rulebook. So of course, if you'd like to speak, all remarks are directed through me. A special note about the motions today. Some motions will differ from the articles as they are printed in the warrant. When I anticipate that this will occur, I will alert you to it. We'll have 14 articles that require a two-thirds majority. Motions to limit or extend debate also require a two-thirds majority. And our bylaws require that if residents want to stop debate, they can do so only after five have spoken in favor and five against, and the presumption is that these are speakers from the floor, not the main movers of a motion. The three microphones toward the front of the garage are for those who want to speak in favor, those who have a question, and those who are opposed. And I'll alternate among each. Should you have a motion to amend, that needs to be in writing. There's no cross-examination. If you have any question about how to accomplish something, just go ahead and ask. I will direct questions to the person who could best answer it. Please try to keep your comments to about two minutes. All remarks, of course, are concise and civil. I now welcome the motion on Article One. Mr. LaCusa.
Article One. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to choose three trustees to administer the William Goldwith bequest and that Francis Miffett, William McGurk, and Erin Kobler be chosen as trustees.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Gold. This requires a simple majority. Any discussion from the floor?
The Goldwith request.
Hold on. Oh, I'm so sorry. Please forgive me. Out of practice. Mr. LaCusa, you may speak to this motion.
Yes. The Goldwith bequest is an endowment fund left to the town of Long Meadow for assistance to the worthy poor of Long Meadow. The Board of Trustees administers this fund and makes expenditures from accruing interest for applicants experiencing financial hardship. The trustees are chosen annually by town meeting.
Now, questions? Name and address, please.
Pete Landon, 5 Meadow Brook Road, Chair of the Audit Committee. Quick question. How are these trustees selected? And the other question is, what is the amount of principal in the Goldwith trust?
Okay, so the first question, some of these folks have been on the committee and are seeking to be reappointed, and other folks heard about the openings and applied. As far as the amount, I guess I would refer to Paul Pesterzak. Is he?
Mr. Pesterzak?
In all honesty, I don't have an exact number, but I'm guessing it's somewhere in the tens of thousands of dollars from what I remember in the past.
Thank you. We shall now come to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion carries unanimously. Affirmative vote. Article Two, Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $225 for the purpose of paying prior year's bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. LaCusa.
It was discovered around the time the town was closing its 20 fiscal year financial records that certain commitments involving training of staff had not been paid. These appropriations will allow the town to make good on those commitments.
Thank you. This is recommended by the Finance Committee. Any discussion? This requires a four-fifths vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you. Opposed? Unanimous affirmative vote. By declaration. All right. Yes, Mr. LaCusa?
This is Consent Agenda Number One. It will consider Articles Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, and Nine in a grouping unless town meeting decides to pull an article out of the consent agenda for separate discussion. I move to approve Articles Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine as part of a consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So for the consent agendas, I will read off each number. If at any point anyone would like to hold an article separately. If at any point anyone would like to hold an article separately, they'll yell out, "Hold." And I will say which article has been held, and we'll consider that article in its normal course. Article Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven. Hold on, Seven. Eight. Hold on, Eight. Nine. All right. We'll come to a vote on Articles Three, Four, Five, Six, and Nine. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. The motion to approve Articles Three, Four, Five, Six, and Nine Article Seven. Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $1,600,000 to be transferred into the Operational Stabilization Fund.
Is there a second? Yes, it's been seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. LaCusa.
The fiscal year 21 budget directives established by the Select Board included a deposit of $250,000 into the town's operational stabilization established by vote of town meeting on November 18, 2003, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B. Originally, this vote was to take place at the June 23, 2020 annual town meeting, but was postponed as a result of the financial uncertainty created by the COVID-19 pandemic. As a result of temporary halting certain services, school crossings, guards, council of aging, recreation, library, etc., larger-than-average unexpendited funds were witnessed at the end of fiscal year 20, recreating a greater-than-normal amount of fiscal year 21 free cash. This amounts will enhance the town's reserves in order to maintain and improve the town's current standards and standard and poor's credit rating of AA+. The town's general reserve summation of free cash and stabilization funds is July 1. The policy requires a 5% to 10% reserve when compared to operating revenues. The July 1, 2020 percentage of reserves to operating revenues is approximately 8.58%.[789.23][789.23][applause]
Further discussion?[793.37][793.37][applause]
A question. Pete Landon, 5 Meadowbrook, Chair of the Audit Committee. Could you educate us as to the amount of money that came from the CARES Act and the American Rescue Act to the town of Long Meadow for any of its functioning bodies and as well as state grants related to COVID?
Town manager, Mr. Sturzick?[819.73][819.73][applause]
Hi, Lynn Simmons, Town Manager. The CARES amount was 1.4 million. I don't have the school total with me. And the American Rescue Plan money is approximately 4.7 million, but we do not have that yet.[854.26][854.26][applause]
Would the schools? Superintendent O'Shea, would you have that?
Good afternoon. Marty O'Shea, Superintendent of Schools. In the case of the Coronavirus Relief Fund, the grant was 600,000. We received 498,000 from what was called the Esser II Grant. Then CARES I was the amount of 242,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Landon?
There was a third part of that question. The state, I'm on a legislative chair committee. The state has $8.1 billion it's receiving, and I didn't know any of that was going to make its way to communities. 8.1 billion is the last count.
I don't know whether either the Town Manager or the Finance Director could address that third part.[944.56][944.56][applause]
Peter, is that the ARPA money? May I ask, Moderator?
Yes, go ahead and ask.
Yes.
Okay.
And plus the amount of revenue they got in at the state level for 12 months over and above benchmark budget.
Again, the only amount that is earmarked for Long Meadow is that 4.7 million. And that can be expended between, as soon as we start to get it per se, through FY '24. But any of their surplus, we are not aware of. We're getting any of that money at this point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll come to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of the motion on Article Seven raise your yellow cards? Thank you. Unanimous affirmative vote. Article Eight. Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to rescind $1,300,000 of the $2 million borrowing authorization for Phase II of the capping of the remaining portion of Burney Road-Tina Lane landfill. Voted in Article 15 at the November 5, 2019, Special Town Meeting.
Is there a second? Yes, it's been seconded. You may speak to it.
While the town authorized $2 million to complete Phase II of the capping of Burney Road-Tina Lane landfill, only $700,000 was required to complete the project. The $700,000 was borrowed in May 2020.
This is recommended by the Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Go ahead.[1053.16][1053.16][applause]
Cynthia Summer, 57 Farmington Avenue. I'm also the president of the Friends of Fannie Stebbins Wildlife Refuge. Could someone from the DPW or the town just tell us what Phase II was and that it's done? And my question is, sometimes after a project is completed, further monitoring or testing of the water is required to see that there are no leaks or anything like that? And so before we, you know, don't have this money anymore and it's moved somewhere else, I just want to make sure that if that kind of testing is required, it would come from somewhere else in the town budget, that we have enough money to do any further work that is required down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is someone from our DPW available?
Yeah.
Hold on one second. Mr. LaCusa? Is he right there?
Do you want to speak to that?
Lynn, is someone from DPW, or can you answer it?
Oh, no. Oh. Go ahead, Lynn. Go ahead, yes.
We do have the Town Engineer here as well. But Phase II was the part of the cap of the landfill. It enlarged the capping area, if I remember correctly. And yes, we do have the ongoing monitoring as part of the DPW budget. We do have a separate contract for that.
Was there anything further the engineer wanted to add? Okay. Any further discussion? All right. We'll come directly to a vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Unanimous affirmative vote.[1165.03][1165.03][applause] Article 10. Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to fix the fiscal year 2022 salary and compensation of the moderator at $1,000 and the select persons at $2,000 each to provide for reserve fund and to approve the fiscal year 2022 operating budget totaling $74,269,508 as itemized as follows. General Government: $1,737,927. Public Safety: $5,556,634. Planning and Community Development: $233,273. The Department of Public Works General Fund: $4,714,816. Community and Cultural Services: $1,628,475. Debt Service Town and School Employee Retiree Benefits: $17,556,020. Subtotal General Fund: $67,944,567. Water Enterprise: $3,46,611. Sewer Enterprise: $2,262,789. Stormwater Enterprise: $1,015,541. A total of $74,269,508. And to fund the General Fund, $67,944,567, be raised and appropriated as follows. $67,944,567 from general taxation. And to fund the Water Enterprise Fund, $3,46,611, be raised and appropriated as follows. $3,46,611 from water receipts. And to fund the Sewer Enterprise Fund, $2,262,789, be raised and appropriated as follows. $2,262,789 from sewer receipts. And to fund the Stormwater Enterprise, $1,015,541, be raised and appropriated as follows. $473,344 from the stormwater receipts and $542,197 from general taxation.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded.
Okay. I move to amend the main motion so it reads as follows. Do you need a second for the amendment?[1398.66][1398.66][applause] After I read it?
You have to make the motion.
I move that the town vote to fix the fiscal year 2022 salary and compensation of the moderator at $1,000 and the select persons at $2,000 each to provide for a reserve fund and to approve the fiscal year 2022 operating budget totaling $74,178,576 and itemized as follows. General Government: $1,737,927. Public Safety: $5,556,634. Planning and Community Development: $233,273. Department of Public Works General Fund: $4,714,816. Community Cultural Services: $1,628,475. Debt Service and Town School Employee Retiree Benefits: $17,556,020. Subtotal General Fund: $67,853,635. The Water Enterprise: $3,46,611. Sewer Enterprise: $2,662,789. Storm Enterprise.
Mr. LaCusa, I'm sorry. Could you say that again, please? Sewer Enterprise, please?
Sewer Enterprise is $2,262,789. And the Stormwater Enterprise, $1,015,541, for a total of $74,178,576. And to fund the General Fund, $67,853,635, be raised and appropriated as follows. $67,853,635 from general taxation. And to fund the Water Enterprise Fund, $3,46,611, be raised and appropriated as follows. $3,46,611 from water receipts. And to fund the Sewer Enterprise Fund, $2,262,789, be raised and appropriated as follows. $2,262,789 from sewer receipts. And to fund the Stormwater Enterprise, $1,015,541, be raised and appropriated as follows. $473,344 from stormwater receipts and $542,197 from general taxation.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
An annual operating budget must be adopted and funded for fiscal year 2022 that begins on January 1, 2021. The Select Board's budget was reviewed by the Finance Committee as required by the town charter. The Select Board's budget was printed, is a balanced budget and required by the Massachusetts General Laws and the Charter. The Select Board fiscal year 2022 recommended budget only utilized 1.75 of the allowable 2.5% increase authorized by Proposition 2.5, which creates an estimated $385,222 in unused tax levy capacity. Since the School Committee requested a different budget amount, the School Committee's budget amount by law must be read in the original budget motion and will be amended by the Select Board on the floor of town meeting to reflect the Select Board's recommended budget. Should the School Committee's requested budget be approved, the excess levy capacity will drop from $294,290 and add approximately 4 cents will be added to the tax rate. The amended motion reflects a reduction in the fiscal year 22 school appropriation of $90,932. The School Committee's voted budget by law is read in the original motion. The School Committee voted the budget request in early February 2021. The Town Manager, after reviewing the full town budget, made her recommendations to the School Board in early March 2021. Fiscal year 2022 budget requests far exceed the estimated revenues, thus requiring reductions in the request in order to present a balanced budget to the Select Board. The adopted Select Board budget can read in the amended motion as a balanced budget based on current projections.[1745.13][1745.13][applause]
Finance Committee recommendation? Mr. Lamb?
My name's Andrew Lamb. I am privileged to be the Chair of the Finance Committee this year. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend the Select Board budget for $74,178,576. And I'd just like to take a brief moment to provide an update and summary of our long-term fiscal outlook and how this influenced the creation of this budget from our perspective. As most, if not all, of you know, Long Meadow is constrained by a part of the Proposition 2.5 state law that limits a town's tax rate to $25 per $1,000 of assessed property value. This is what many of us call the tax ceiling. By this measure, we have had the highest residential tax rate in the state for several years and are currently the municipality that is closest to hitting the tax ceiling. If and when we breach this tax ceiling, we will not be able to raise taxes anymore, which will mean a definite reduction in services and employees in every department. will mean a definite reduction in services and employees in every department since so many costs like salaries, health insurance, and retirement benefits contractually rise each and every year. At last June's town meeting, a Warren article proposing to request the state legislature exempt us from the tax ceiling was defeated. Essentially, our town collectively decided that we should live within our means and limit tax growth. Because of this looming tax ceiling, the Finance Committee, Select Board, and School Committee have assiduously been working to reduce tax rate growth since 2017. Whereas in prior years, it was the norm to simply raise taxes up to the maximum allowed 2.5% increase each year, we have been gradually reducing that tax increase. And this year, the target was set at an increase limited to 1.75%. Each year, the Finance Committee runs projections based on best information and determines what is the highest allowable tax increase that should keep us under the tax ceiling for approximately 10 years. This is how the 1.75% figure was determined. This Select Board budget meets that goal. You should know that the school committee budget reflected their good faith requests, knowing the town's fiscal constraints, but it is not until the town manager has received all the budget requests from all the town departments that she can create the final budget that attains the 1.75% goal that she was tasked with meeting. To achieve this goal, she had to reduce every department's budget, not just the school committees, whose budget request was reduced by only 0.25%. The credit for this year's smooth and prudent budgetary process really goes to the Select Board, the School Committee, and the Town Manager. Throughout the year, our Finance Committee saw these bodies work collaboratively and in a spirit of shared purpose in light of the fiscal challenges we space. Ironically, the looming tax ceiling has served as a somewhat unifying feature because all of our interests are now aligned. We and all the town's employees share the same goal. We all want Long Meadow to remain fiscally healthy and to avoid the drastic layoffs and cuts that will come to pass if taxes and spending increase too rapidly and the tax ceiling is breached. But if we act prudently, as we have this year with the Select Board's budget listed here, we should be able to maintain level service for as long as possible. Once again, we all appreciate the School Committee and Select Board's work on the budget this year, as well as the help of Finance Directors Paul Pasterzak and Tom Mazza and Superintendent Marty O'Shea and Town Manager Lynn Simmons. The credit for this year's success goes to all of them, and we look forward to working with them to maintain the same prudent fiscal planning next year to the benefit of every resident. Thank you.
Thank you. The floor is open to discussion.
Pete Landen, 5 Meadowbrook. Could you explain either the schools and the town as to how you're going to flow the money we talked about that are receiving from the federal government into the budgets in fiscal year '22, '23, and Mr. Pasterzak mentioned '24 in one case? And how does that play out in issues like Mr. Lam was just describing, the tax ceiling and the separation from the $25? Thank you.
The School Committee? Somebody from the School Committee? Mr. O'Shea?
The CARES Act funding that we mentioned earlier and the CBRF funding that we mentioned earlier were incorporated into the FY '22 budget. And yet to be determined is the grant funding that would come from the, an additional federal stimulus bill.
And Town Manager or Finance Director?
The 4.7 amount of money that the town is to receive, it's basically not to supplement current budgets, but it is to address the continued fight of COVID spreading and things of that nature. There are other provisions in there that we can also utilize it for water and sewer infrastructure and broadband infrastructure. One of the biggest things that they specifically state in their guidelines, which are draft at this point in time, is that the town is not to use that to lower the tax rate or to increase their reserves. So again, we will be planning, once we have the exact guideline set up, we will be planning that budget over the next couple of years and just have a draft that would be available for that FY '22, '23, '24 period of that 4.7.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, go ahead.
I'm here to speak about a small item of this particular article, and that has to do with the moderator's increase in the budget, in the moderator's budget. As we know, the budget for the moderator has always been $100. I'm not necessarily opposed to an increase in the moderator's budget. I know a little bit about the job because I did it for 18 years. And ladies and gentlemen, this is a matter that came last year, as we remember, as an amendment, an amendment to the budget. It was a proposal that was not brought before the Select Board. It was not brought before the Finance Committee. There was no other committee in town that had a chance to consider the proposal except those people that attended last year's annual town meeting. Now, bear in mind, Madam Moderator, this is not, this is not an objection over the typically excellent job that our current moderator does. We're not talking about the person, we're talking about the job, the office of the moderator. And the matter was never brought before the selectmen, not before the Finance Committee, not any other board in town. Instead, it was placed before this town meeting as an amendment of the budget, as I indicated. My objection to the, with all the figures that are part of this particular article, my objection really is the way that it was done. It's the process, ladies and gentlemen, that gave me pause. It's, we know that the moderator's job is a very difficult one, but I think that when you're considering a 900%, a 900% increase in the moderator's budget, I think that deserves some pause and some explanation as to why, why the public, the general public, prior to the town meeting isn't informed of this. The way an amendment works, well, of course, you couldn't present this kind of matter before the, before the town meeting because it's an amendment to the budget. It's filed and voted on at the town meeting. But I think that I'm opposed to this, this motion simply because the process of informing the public of a 900% increase in the moderator's budget is something that deserved a little bit more publicity. It deserved a little bit more preparation for the townspeople to know that this is probably, in my opinion, it's probably one of the most important jobs in town. And as I said, it's not, it's not with respect to our current moderator, it's the current, it's the job itself. And for that reason, I'm objecting, and I'm a voting no on this particular article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes?
Thank you, thank you. I'm Larry Starr, 81 Williamsburg Drive. About two years ago, I think, we completed a review of the Town Charter, and I served on that committee with a number of other town members. It was about a two-year job to go through it word by word. I point out, this is the legislative body of the town. This is the place where those decisions are made. This is the place where you bring issues that were not previously raised. Likewise, there's no question, I think, by anybody here about the quality of the job being done. But one of my favorite courses in college was how to lie with statistics. And the prior moderator fee was $100. If we had doubled it, if we'd gone up 100%, it would be $200. So the statistic doesn't mean anything that it went up $900. The question is, why was it $100 for so many years? That was silly. It should have been zero, or it should have been something that made sense. $1,000 is not too much for this town to spend for the moderator's services. As you know, last year, the moderator did a lot more than previously was required because of the continual moving of the meetings and the discussion of how that was going to be operated, and ultimately that we had to actually have a meeting and vote on a number of things. So the process, which is what the argument was, was the right way of doing it. This is where those things happen. This is why people need to come to town meeting. This is our legislative method, and I think it's the most wonderful method that we ever will have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote on the amendment first. This is the second motion that Chair LaCusa made. And then we'll come to the main motion as amended if the vote is an approval. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All opposed to the motion to amend? Thank you. The motion to amend has been approved by majority affirmative vote. Now we come to the main motion as amended. Okay, I thought you were coming to speak, sorry about that. Then we'll come directly to a vote on the motion as amended. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Go ahead.
It's not, oh, here we go. Thank you. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 for the purposes of establishing a wage settlement account to cover the fiscal year 2022, the FIRE collective bargaining agreement, and the non-school, non-union wage adjustments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Mr. LaCusa.
With the exception of the FIRE collective bargaining agreement, all other non-school collective bargaining agreements are current and contractual wages allotted are built into the fiscal year 2022 budget. Wage adjustments for the FIRE union personnel and non-school, non-union personnel are not built into the fiscal year 2022 budget, as presented. This appropriation will provide funds to cover wage adjustments as determined by the town manager under the Town Charter 5-2D. The Finance Director will only release funds from the wage settlement account to the proper budgetary line items upon notification from the town manager of the wage adjustments allotted.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This is recommended by the Finance Committee as well. We'll come directly to a vote on the motion under Article 11. This requires a simple majority. Do you wish to speak on this?
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to ask. My name is Larry Goldberg, I live at 159 Redfern Drive. And if I want to have an article moved up, when do I get to ask that question?
After we deal with this vote.
Thank you.
Please, thank you. All right, so all in favor of the motion under Article 11, please raise your yellow Thank you. All those opposed? The motion carries unanimous affirmative vote. Did you seek recognition? Yep, Mr. Goldberg?
Yes, it's tough to see with the masks there.
That's okay.
I just asked that we move Article 37 up to next.
So a motion to advance an article does require a two, no, yes, two-thirds affirmative vote? It is debatable? Is there a second on this motion to move Article 37? All right, there is a second, you may speak to the motion to advance the article, so just why we should move Article 37 to now.
I just think as the meeting progresses, people might leave the room that are concerned about it.
All right, any further discussion on the article, on the motion to advance Article
Town meeting is, no, the Larry Starr, 81 Williamsburg Drive. Town meeting is noticed, people get warrants, you have a list of what it is. There's no reason to move this particular article, people should stay till the end, and that may be a good incentive to stay to the end. All of the articles are important to vote on. I don't want to make an arrangement to allow people to leave earlier. Stay here, vote on the important things, and if you don't like the $1,000 to the moderator, here's where you vote against it if it were a new item.
That's, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to advance? All right, this requires a two-thirds majority to advance Article 37 to before Article 12. All those in favor of the motion to advance Article 37, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. The motion is defeated by Declaration two-thirds vote.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the following amounts for capital projects, and that any remaining amounts from the capital projects be returned to the Capital Stabilization Fund. From raise and appropriate fiscal '22, project development, 25,000. Project reserve, $10,000. Fire truck replacement reserve, 110,584. Fire kitchen upgrades, 50,000. Radio replacement, non-public safety, Phase 1, 124,639. Townwide S2 system access upgrades, Phase 1, 60,000. Core technology infrastructure relocation, 175,000. Data backup and recovery system, 25,000. Center school boiler replacement, 165,000. Oil tank removal, Blueberry Hill and Wolf Swamp Schools, 44,416. High school glass showcase replacement, 75,000. Purchase of two 4x4 pickups with plows, 80,000. Pavement preservation, 500,000. Sidewalk reconstruction, 400,000. Guide rails, or guardrails, 25,000. Multifund front end loader, three yards, three yarder. Raise and appropriate fiscal '22, 54,509. Water retained earnings, 46,250. Sewer retained earnings, 46,250. Available funds in the Treasury, 37,991. Two-ton dump truck with plow and spreader. Capital stabilization fund, 50,000. Water retained earnings, 25,000. Sewer retained earnings, 25,000.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it.
Annually, the town appropriates funds for capital expenditures. The fiscal '22 capital plan is funded at 3% of the estimated general fund revenues less debt exclusion taxation as allotted for in their capital funding policy.
Okay, any further discussion? This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Carla Gunn, 1579 Long Meadow Street. I was wondering if someone could just give a little more detail on the core technology infrastructure relocation and the data backup and recovery system, based on our times today.
Thank you. Is the Chair of the Capital Preservation, Mr. Metz?
Stephen Metz, Chair of the Capital Planning Committee. In answer to that specific question, when the school, high school was initially built, rumors not permitted, allowed for the core infrastructure to support both the school and the town communication system, which has grown significantly. As a result, that communication system was located in the basement of the high school and along with where the boiler is and the vending system is, and if you go down- And if you go down and look at it, it looks like a ham radio shack. So this is totally inappropriate for the high level of communication we now use, which is basically what keeps a town as a whole able to communicate with all the departments. Thank you, Mr. Metz.
Thank you. Yes?
Larry Goldberg, Redfern Drive. On this pavement preservation that I see $500,000, I'm just curious. A few years back, Redfern Drive where I live was supposed to be dug up and repaved. And when the old town manager was here, he had promised the residents that after Converse Street was redone, we were next on the list. It's now 2021, and they crack sealed it like you would do a home driveway. It's never been fixed. And it's one of the most highly traveled streets in the town.
Thank you.
I'm curious if that'll be handling it.
Mr. Metz, I don't know whether you can address that question? Okay. Someone from our DPW available to answer that? Or Town Manager?
I don't have the specificity on Redfern Drive if it's up for this next paving cycle this summer, but I can follow up with you after the meeting unless DPW did have that, more information on that here and now. Doesn't look like that. So we can follow up with you after the meeting, Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you.
I'm Colonel John Friedson, 9 Green Willow Drive. I've got some questions about the high school glass showcase replacement. Now, I admit, I just had Anderson Windows quote a plate glass replacement on a picture window. So yeah, I get glass can be really expensive. But regardless, I'm having difficulty understanding how a trophy case costs $75,000, and I would like some explanation as to how that much money is required to display trophies, if that's what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Would somebody from the school department or, go ahead.
Hello, Nick Jurganis, Facilities Director. It was based on an estimation and the amount of glass that's actually there. The cases would actually need to be reworked to support the weight of the glass itself. And it came from an estimation of an architect.
Thank you. Yes?
Mitchell Breck, 131 Tennyson Drive. I too take issue with the $80,000 for the repairing of the LHS glass in the lobby. As I understand it, this is used primarily by the art program in the school. And while I can't claim to speak on behalf of the entirety of the LHS art program, I was a member of it for, excuse me, for two years, and I don't remember there being, that being much of an issue. It just kind of seems like a misuse of funds with little reward. And I was wondering if someone could speak as to why this is being done now and, yeah, basically why.
Thank you. So Superintendent, will you be able to answer that?
I defer to Facilities Director Jurgantus on the structural need. He can explain it better than I, but I can tell you that the display cases are stretched throughout the school. They're in use by the Athletics Department, the Music Department, and the Art Department, and some general display cases. But there's, it's more than just the display cases that are apparent in the immediate front lobby.
Town Manager Simmons, go ahead.
Thanks. And if I could just add to that, it is a known safety issue right now that we're looking to remediate with this additional capital money. We want to replace it with a product that is safer should a student bump into it and it breaks. We don't want to have glass shattering on any students. So it is a known safety issue, and we would like to remedy it with this capital request.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yep, go ahead.
My name's Ezra Kaim. I live at 134 Williamsburg Drive. Question here. These glass cases were part of the original construction, most likely, if someone could confirm that. And that was only eight years ago in 2013. So is there a warranty on the glass that's still in effect?
Hmm, who might be able to answer that?
Hi, Nick Jurganis, Facilities Director. Previous facilities directors had tried to pursue with the general contractor, and we gained no traction getting anywhere, seeing that this was a safety issue. We wanted to pursue sooner than later.
Follow-up question? Go ahead.
Any legal course being taken then?
Mr. Jurgantus?
To my knowledge, there is no legal course being taken at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes with a majority affirmative vote. Article 13.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $345,000 to pay costs of replacing the air handlers at Long Meadow High School, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow a set amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such amounts by a like, such costs by a like amount.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. You may speak to it.
Replacement of the North Mechanical Room Air Handlers Unit, AHU, at LHS. The air handlers are from the original LHS and have outlived their service life. Replacement parts for these pieces of equipment are no longer manufactured, meaning if replacement was needed, the parts would have to be custom-made, causing the HVAC equipment to be down for an extended period. Since these air handlers service and clean the air for the public school, central office, and classrooms, it's imperative they function, especially in the age of COVID.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Colonel John Friedson, 9 Green Willow Drive. We all hope that COVID's coming to an end, but bluntly, we don't know for sure that it is, and there's variants running out there in the wild that we haven't yet ascertained we're going to be able to easily defeat. Furthermore, in the future, we don't know what we're going to face. Air handling systems during the course of the last year, the technology has advanced, and it is now possible to buy ones that have basically decontamination capabilities built into them. Those include ultraviolet D and also electrostatic. Call it decontamination for lack of a better term. If we're going to spend this kind of money, I strongly suggest that we want to ensure that it's going to be able to have those capabilities so we're not caught flat-footed the next time we're in this sort of a situation. I would like to know if in this price, that's been considered at all? Is it included? And if it's not been included, are we going to go back and revisit that capability? Thank you.
Thank you.
The air handlers were currently retrofitted with bipolar ionization devices to help clean the air. We would plan to recycle those devices that were newly installed and put them on the new equipment.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Pete Landon, 5 Meadowbrook. I wanted to thank the town for the videos, seven of them, on this air handlers and six other topics that were available on the town website. I've never seen that level of detail on projects, and I think in the future, it could be widely used as a tool for communicating some of these important details. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a two-thirds majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. The motion passes with a two-thirds declaration, majority affirmative vote. Article 14.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $777,700 to pay costs of replacing water mains on Farmington Avenue, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow a set amount and pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 8.5, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes for the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such amounts, such costs by a like amount.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Strange.
The proposed work will replace the existing six-inch cast iron water main with a new eight-inch ductile water main, water pipe, fitted with new main valves, new service lines, and new hydrants. The proposed work will improve water quality and provide more water capacity for fire protection.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote in the case of borrowing. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. This passes a majority affirmative, two-thirds declaration. Mr. Strange?
I move to approve Articles 15 and 16 as part of a consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made in seconded. If anyone wishes to hold either 15 or 16, speak when I speak, yell out "hold" when I call that number. 15, 16. All right, then we will come directly to a vote on these two articles. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the consent agenda for 15 and 16, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. It passes by majority, excuse me, unanimous affirmative vote. Mr. Strange?
I move to approve Articles 17 and 18 as part of a consent agenda.
Second.
The motion's been made in seconded. If there's anyone who wishes to hold out either one, call out "hold" when I say the article number. Article 17, 18. We'll come directly to a vote on Articles 17 and 18. This requires a two-thirds majority affirmative vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda on 17 and 18, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. It passes by unanimous declaration. Mr. Morantz, Article 19.
I move the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of producing preliminary survey and design work for the possible reconstruction, reconfiguration of Long Meadow Street Route 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made in seconded. You may speak to it.
In order to be considered for state funding for the reconstruction, reconfiguration of Long Meadow Street Route 5, the town must prepare preliminary survey and design work. This appropriation is the second $100,000 request of an estimated $400,000 engineering project that will allow the town to satisfy that requirement.
Thank you. This has been recommended by the Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Yes?
Pete Landon, 5 Meadowbrook. This is really important to get a favorable vote on because it supports these preliminary work that Mr. Morantz described supports us, a $6 million road reconstruction, of which four of the million is put up by the state and two by the, but four by the federal and two by the state. And it's very competitive in the region. It's approved by a regional body at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And if you don't get your ducks aligned, if you're not quote shovel-ready, they move somebody else up on it. And Walter Gunn is a member of the board there, can tell you more about it. So this is a really important affirmative vote for the, to leverage $400,000 into $6 million. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colonel John Friedson, 9 Green Willow Drive. This is the same measure that was raised up last year, and if you recall, we voted it down. And I suggest the reasons for voting down last year are the same reasons we need to vote it down this year. First, it's not just $100,000. It's the first of $300,000 more from spending that we would be doing here in the town. And the number of $6 million is interesting because online, when I looked it up, it was more like 12 or 13 billion. And when I called the town manager's office this week, I was told it was going to be 16 million. Now, I don't know if it's six or 16.
Oh, excuse me.
But, but, we're talking about millions of dollars, and forgive me if much of it is state money. Last I checked, from the checks I have to write every three months and estimated tax payments, the state money is still our money. We still pay for it. We're talking about millions of dollars in expenditures to fix something that ain't broke and years of disruption on one of the main thoroughfares through town. I, for one, am not interested in making a second I-91 running through the middle of town. I don't personally want to encourage a lot of additional traffic, and I drive that street plenty of times each week. I don't seem to have any trouble navigating it. Yes, there may be other places the state might use the money. Who knows? Maybe it'll go for affordable housing. But there's lots of places it could go, and I don't think, think that we want the years of disruption and spending all this money on fixing something that seems to be operating just fine. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start at the green mic, and then, Mr. Foster, did you seek recognition? Or is that, oh, okay. Yes, at the green mic?
Yes, thank you. Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. First, just to clarify, this $100,000 is from available funds. This will not increase your taxes. Secondly, if you look at Route 5, Springfield near Quinn Field has renovated that part of the road. Enfield, from the border all the way past the town hall, has been renovated. Route 5 in Long Meadow is badly in need of renovation. And just to clarify, this money will not, will be spent in advance of something that's not going to happen for five to 10 years down the road. I look at it this way. It's, I believe it is $16 million, if anyone can clarify that. It is state money that Long Meadow does not get a lot of. And let's put it in perspective. If this was the driveway outside of your house that was going to cost $16,000, would you spend $400, 2.5% of it to get 97.5% reimbursement? I think that's an easy choice because Route 5 will have to be done. This is your opportunity to get the state to pay for the vast majority of the cost. I think it's a very easy decision. You either pay for it now, which I'm in favor of, or we will pay for it later out of our pockets in taxes or bonding. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a question. We'll alternate between those in favor, opposed, and those of questions. We'll go to the man at the yellow mic first, and then, Mr. Foster, had you, were you seeking recognition by standing up? Okay, thank you. I wanted a clarification on that. Yes, sir.
Brett Lukasik, 38 Crescent Road. Could somebody tell us a little more about what the plans are for Route 5? Is it something to make it faster? Or is it something just to make it maybe some traffic calming kind of things?
Somebody from the town manager's office or, I'm sorry? Town engineer?
Tim Keen, Town Engineer.
Tim Keen, Town Engineer. The plans will, there'll be six signals that'll be improved ultimately. The road will be widened, there'll be bicycle lanes added on crosswalks too, so it's a complete street project.
If I could ask, how?
Follow-up, yeah, go ahead.
A follow-up.
Yeah.
How wide is the road going to be widened, and where?
Well, those designs aren't done yet. We don't have the, we don't even have the 25% design yet, so we can't, we can't say for sure how wide the road will be right now.
Thank you. Mr. Foster?
Good afternoon. I'll take my mask off, I've got my shots and got plenty around. Many of you know, my name's Richard Foster. You've seen me stand before you before and talk about roads, sidewalks, sewage pipes, drainage pipes, all that stuff that you really like to use, but nobody seems to want to repair, and it's out of sight, out of mind. I'm the tooth fairy, I look for money to get this stuff done. If you had one, one person stand up here and gave us a pretty good analysis, if I told you I would re-site your home, paint it, and redo your driveway, and all you had to do is get me a quote, would you take me up on it? It's rhetorical, but that's exactly what we're faced here. We only get $478,000 a year on Chapter 90 for the maintenance, for the maintenance of our roadways. This tip fund enables us only on select roadways in town, this is just the major arteries, to get a ton of money to bring them up to the latest standards. Folks, you don't want us taking 10 or 12 million dollars out of your operating dollars when we can get it from Boston. And this is the only way we can get the money. The funds are tightening, the competition is increasing. Preliminary-wise on this roadway, this one looks good. It looks like it could go up the ladder and get approval if we can get it passed. Now, we've been delayed already two years. In the life cycle of asphalt, you get 12 to 15 years before you better be doing some very major repairs, and we're not doing the repairs. So we just took about 10, 20% of lifetime, just in debate on here, on something that shouldn't even be on the town floor. This is what we've hired a professional managers to do, and a professional town manager, is to manage our infrastructure and obtain the funds that we need. This is part of the routine task. I don't, it's a shame that it's on a debate on the floor whether we're going to maintain the roads in our community, but that's exactly what is taking place. We need to turn it over to our professionals, and the select board, and the school committee, and finance. When these people study these issues and bring them forth to you, they should not be in an open debate on the merits of that roadway out there.
Mr. Foster, we'll just keep it to, we are debating it, so.
Keep it, did you ever try to stop me? Okay. As I said before, if you believe in the future of your town, and you believe in the management structure we got, and that we're trying to get better and better and better with what we do, please vote this in, so we can continue working on the design to get this money come to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
My name's Ezra Kane, 134 Williamsburg Drive. I'd like to ask a question to the town meeting before giving my favorable opinion, if that's okay?
Ah, sure, go ahead.
Okay. Would it be able, or possible for someone from the town to confirm that the project we're discussing is going to be similar in nature to the project that was completed on Converse Street a few years ago? The, the opposition speaker, I believe, misclarified it, that could skew the town meeting vote.
Would the town engineer want to defer to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission? Pioneer Valley Planning Commission rep, Mr. Gunn?
Actually, good afternoon, Walter Gunn, 1579 Long Meadow Street. So first of all, I live on this street. Number two, I am the representative to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is a very fortunate thing, there's only seven or eight people that sit on this thing that vote for federal transportation dollars for our region. Right now, we're getting about $28 million a year. The demands for this region is north of a billion dollars, and this is, this is all 43 communities in our Pioneer Valley. So this project has been kicked down the road now for several years, and in order for our committee to actually, to look at this, which is done through something called the Joint Transportation Committee, which our town engineer is aware of, all our towns have to go to this committee, we have to argue and vet our reason for why we need a road project. Usually it has to do with this thing called a TEC, it's a, it's a scoring system. And these people look at the safety, congestion mitigation, and pollution control. This project already has a federal number, and yes, we need $400,000, and we're trying to do this over every year. It would have been nice if we'd just gotten $400,000, three years ago. We had a chance to have this improvement project, and because we don't have the 25%, the project continues to be delayed. It has a blank spot on it, and this is the actual plan. Converse Street was the same way, we went through the same process, we had to raise money for an engineering study. As you recall, years ago, at town meeting, we approved something called Complete Streets. So to answer some of the previous people's questions, yes. In the old days, all we would do is slap some new asphalt on the street and put some new marks on it. Complete Streets now requires updated signalization, it requires bicycle lanes, exactly what you see on Converse Street is what we need, and yes, it adds a lot of money. So the sooner we can get this thing to what's called 25%, I can then advocate for this town, on this committee, to get this project done. I live on Route 5, the road is a wreck, my house shakes with trucks going down it. I don't know who else lives here in this community on Route 5, will justify. I think the last improvements to this road was, was, was in 1992 or '93. So I hope we guys can vote for this. I would almost make an amendment to get the full amount of money, so we can get this thing going forward, because it's.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes?
Just to basically, to quickly answer Mr. Kane's question, is it similar to the?
Yes, it's identical. It's exact process.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I gotta give my 10 cents and to advocate.
All right.
All right.
Well, here.
So that's it, so I'm just saying, I would, I'm recommending that we do appropriate this $100,000 today. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Kane, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this project. Going back to the Converse Street project, the interruption was not terrible. I believe that the project was completed, maybe majority in one summer, I think. And I think we need to get moving on this before we have rapid inflation, as some economists are hinting at. So we'd rather do it now before it becomes a more expensive project.
All right. Any further discussion on the article under Article 19? Go ahead.
Yes, Thomas Lee, 180 Lawrence Drive. I would just like to address anybody who has doubts that the road needs to be repaired or looked at for reconstruction. So I use biking and running as a main transportation throughout town. I'm a runner at LHS, and when I look at Long Meadow Street, it is filled with cracks, and there are many places that have ridges that are unsafe, and a lot of injuries can arise from that. Also, biking down it, it is, it is pretty unsafe right now as well, so the addition of bike lanes would fix that, very much so. So I would just like to say that I'm, I am in complete favor of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Colonel John Friedson, 9 Green Willow Drive. Well, first, it's interesting to hear that we have $100,000 floating around, and we're not going to need any more taxes. If we have that money, I'd like to see the first thing I get used for be to repair the pothole at the corner of Memorial and Frank Smith that has been there for at least six weeks and been called into multiple times. So if we have extra money, why don't we start with that? If we have extra money, why don't we look at putting in more sidewalks, so that senior citizens and people pushing baby carriages aren't doing so in the street? That would be a good use of the money. We heard a couple of things just now. We heard that, oh, it's not your, not our money because it comes from the state. You already know my opinion on that one, unless I get to stop paying state taxes. We heard, you need to leave this to the experts, people, because you're not smart enough to make that decision. I think we are smart enough to make that decision. I think we are smart enough to understand that a complete expansion of that road, making it wider, is not the same as doing maintenance. And we certainly need more road maintenance in this town. If we want another $100,000, super. Let's put vote right now and vote to put in hot patch, or something else to fix the potholes that are inevitably out of control, including the so-called new construction.
That's beyond our, that's beyond the scope, Mr. Friedson.
Okay, fine. I think we're smart enough to decide how we spend our money, and I think this is once again leading up to something that's not broke, let's not pay to fix it.
Thank you. Up for discussion?
Hello, my name is Florence Odutola, from 84 Lawrence Drive. I just have a comment, I'm not sure if it's really relevant here. When Converse Road was done, where I think a lot of us are satisfied with the general result, but I have a problem with the trees that were grown along the belt line, because I have to come out of one of the side roads, and I noticed that with a lot of roads, they impede your view when you're going onto the main road, and you have to be almost going into Converse to see where you're going. Are we going to see what the final result will look like for Long, for Route 5, and we're going to have to face those same problems?
Thank you for the question. I don't know whether the town engineer can speak to what the road design may look like, about with regard to trees or shrubbery? Could you, you can speak at this mic if you want, it's a little easier.
When, when the design is completed, there'll be a public hearing process at the 25% design that will have those kind of details.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just have a question that Mr. Gunn just brought up. Larry Goldberg, again, Redfern Drive. I'm just concerned with having my family started off with the house I'm in on Redfern, and I bought it back in '93. He mentioned that in 1992, Route 5 was maintained or redug up, which Converse was just done about five years ago. And again, we're spending money on streets that are state-run. When does Redfern get some attention?
That's kind of beyond the scope of this particular article. We're here to discuss the Long Meadow Street renovation.
Right, but we had money allocated five years ago with the old town manager. Where's that money? Why hasn't it been done? You want to talk about Route 5, let's talk about doing things that were addressed five years ago, and we're on the list.
And I assure you that you, when you are able to call the town manager's office, they can address that at that point. Right now, our, our discussion is limited to Route 5. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Roger Wojcik, 29 Burns Meadow. I call in a question as to whether or not we should be approving more than $100,000. I would not want to lose our place in a very effective long-range plan effort to rebuild Long Meadow Street. Can I ask the question as to whether or not it would make more sense to provide an amendment to this motion to play catch-up ball on that $100,000?
Let me address the Finance Director, if that's possible? It is.
The remaining amount in our free cash, as it's defined in the warrant, is other available funds in the treasury. But given the fact that we've gone through many of the other articles that have made appropriations from our free cash account, the only amount that we would be able to add to that is $29,764.
That won't cut it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, Mary Connors, 94 Meadow Road. Just a question regarding the widening of possibly Route 5, and the fact that the town is already investing in putting trees on Route 5. What, my concern is that we're putting trees on that might eventually get ripped up. So I would say we need to be fiscally responsible, and I love that we have new trees, but I would hate to see the Route, the Route widen and have to then rip those trees out. So I think that should be taken under consideration if we do pass this or not, because you don't want to keep on adding trees if they're going to eventually get uprooted.
Thank you. Was that a question, or?
Yes, I was just wondering on the width of the street, that could impede all the planting that's already been done.
The town engineer?
Part of the design, excuse me, the design engineers will look at the trees that exist there right now to avoid, to try to avoid any kind of taking of trees. And going forward, with that project in mind, we, we will work with a tree warden to make sure we're not planting trees we know are going to conflict with the project.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Hi, Alan Biver, 6 Roseland Terrace. This is just a question, is, is this just a smaller piece of a larger puzzle of our congestion issues that we have at Route 5, heading into Springfield and getting onto 91? Living in a neighborhood right near there, there's a lot of cut-through traffic that happens there, so I'd like to know that this is just a piece of a long-range transportation plan?
Thank you. Mr. Gunn?
Yep, hello. Okay, yes, sir, you are correct. So for 2023, we have approved and appropriated the money to do a complete renovation of the entrance into Long Meadow Street from Springfield to Converse Street to connect to the, the current upgraded Converse Street, from which goes from Laurel Street out to East Long Meadow. So that's, that's, that was more of a priority to the previous town manager, that one we pushed through. And it was a low-cost, relatively low-cost item, so that one is for fiscal year, federal year, 2023. So yes, so sometime in the near future, we should have a completely upgraded, modern thruway from Connecticut to the Springfield line.
Thank you. Are we ready to come to a vote? Oh, nope, we have one more.
Thanks. Nancy Yasu, 131 Hillcrest Avenue. As part of that, that you just mentioned coming up, does that include some kind of a rotary at the entrance to Long Meadow? Could you speak to that, exactly what that means for an upgrade coming from Springfield into Long Meadow?
Mr. Gunn, would you be able to answer that?
Yes, believe it or not, a rotary was considered as a possibility at Converse Street and Long Meadow Street. Would have required a large taking of land. The roundabouts have been quite successful in other towns, but in this case, our town engineers worked with the Joint Transportation Committee and decided it was not, not a good idea. So, but it'll be all modern signalization to allow traffic, it'll be, you know, smart traffic lights. So it should be similar to, if you've driven out, well, here today, you came to this meeting, if you came up through Converse Street, the Williams Street, and this Maple Street corridor, you'll see how efficient the signalization works now, moves traffic. It's smart, and it recognizes times of gridlock and times of light traffic. So that's what the, the project is, and that's why these lights cost so much money.
All right, are we ready to come to a vote? Would, this requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. The motion passes with a majority affirmative vote. Article 20. Mr. Morantz?
I move the town vote to transfer $92,500 from the Community Preservation Committee, May 2018, Article 23 appropriation, for the Wolf Swamp Field Ring Road to Community Preservation Committee Appropriations, May 18th, Article Number 22, and May 9, 2019, Article Number 26, for the Wolf Swamp Field leveling, field improvement, and an irrigation system.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it?
Community Preservation Committee voted on September 2nd, 2020, to repurpose the appropriation for the Wolf Swamp Ring Road and add an existing appropriation for the Wolf Swamp Fields that is less restrictive. Since Article Number 23 was appropriated back in 2018, a new plan for the renovation of the field, parking, and traffic management has been developed, which no longer includes a ring road around the perimeter of the fields. This article will clarify that funds previously allocated remain available for the improvement of the fields. No additional funding is being provided by this article.
Thank you. This has been recommended by the Finance Committee. Is there any further discussion? This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. This is approved by a unanimous affirmative vote. All right, Mr. Morantz?
I move to approve Articles 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25 as part of a consent agenda.
All right, so I will call out the number, I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. I will call out each number. If you wish to hold something for separate consideration, yell "hold" when I call out that, that article number. 21. 22. 23. 23 is held. 24. 25. All right, we will come to a vote on Article, to approve Articles 21, 22, 24, and 25. Would all those, raise, in favor, raise your yellow cards? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Unanimous affirmative vote. We will come to discussion of Article 23 in just a minute. Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Go ahead, Mr. Morantz?
I move that the town vote to fund the community preservation project for the replacement of the Wolf Swamp School Playground in the amount of $190,000 to be funded from the community preservation undesignated fund balance.
Is there a second?
Second.
You may speak to it. The motion's been made and seconded.
The con equipment at the Wolf Swamp School Playground is 22 years old and is showing signs of wear. The school playground provides recreation for 380 students at the school.
I'm sorry, is it?
Do you want me to keep on going?
You finished?
I'm done.
I'm sorry, I was distracted over there. Finance Committee recommendation, please. Thank you.
The finance committee voted not to recommend this article. This is the only warrant article that we are not recommending in the warrants. The reason is simply because some of us have kids and know this placeet because we've used it over the years. And when members of our committee specifically went to check out its condition this spring, we agree the placeets are actually in good shape. They are a certain number of years old, which is why the DPW suggested they be replaced. But we felt that there were surely years of life remaining in the current structures. The DPW is tasked with maintaining it annually, and it was simply our opinion that it is in the town's best interest to spend $190,000 not on replacing this placeet at this time, but to instead put it towards other projects that are more need than want or are more pressing, such as the Wolf Swamp Field Project, for example. We did take some photos, actually, to show at this meeting, but unfortunately, we weren't, the IT department determined it wasn't possible to show them, but thank you.
Any further discussion? This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 20, of the motion under Article 23, raise your yellow Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. The motion fails by majority negative vote. Mr. Morantz?
I move to approve Articles 26 and 27 as part of a consent agenda.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. I will call out the numbers, call out "hold," you know the routine. Articles 26, 27. All those, the motion to approve Articles 26 and 27 as part of a consent agenda, all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. It passes by a unanimous affirmative vote.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 62 Department of Finance Administration of the Town Charter as follows. A, Establishment and Scope. There shall be a Department of Finance Administration responsible for the fiscal affairs of the town and for the coordination and overall supervision of all business, fiscal, and financial activities of all town agencies. The Department of Finance Administration shall include the functions of accounting, tax and fee collections, treasury management, assessing, purchasing, contracting, and all those functions further assigned by the town manager.
Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded, and you may speak to it?
The removal of the school department reference would allow the charter, would align the charter to the current practice of the Department of Finance Administration. The removal of information technology, town clerk's functions, and personnel functions allow for the Department of Finance Administration to focus on the core financial functions. Additionally, the information technology function has not materialized under the Department of Finance Administration as the 2004 charter anticipated.
Thank you. Further discussion? Go ahead.
Larry Starr, 81 Williamsburg. As I mentioned earlier, I served on the Charter Review Committee, and we spent two years rewriting the charter, providing our recommendations to the Select Board. This is one of the select, this is one of the recommendations that was provided. The Select Board has been diligent in going through our recommendations slowly and methodically to make sure that they are appropriate, and they have been bringing these recommendations to the town meeting on a regular basis until we get through all of them. This certainly is something that needs to be done. It's cleaning up the wording to match what we're doing and give us a better methodology for handling these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Pete Landon, 5 Meadowbrook. I was on the same review commission and also with others in this room in 2004 when this line item was installed. The intent of the line item is not to take over any control on the school department by including the school department in there, which is now being proposed to be deleted. The reason I think it should stay as originally put in place in the original charter of 2004 is that the schools are really encircled by services from the town. The town does all the bonding for the schools. It prepares some payroll. It does the audit. It does grounds maintenance. Its pension plans are for non-teachers, are managed by the town. Healthcare and retiree healthcare for the teachers, of which my wife is a retired school teacher. And OPEB, and most of all, the finance committee keeps us within the proposition two and a half of boundaries. And that is not a strategy developed on the school side. It's developed by the finance committee. So if you have an island, you know, in education, and you take them out on this particular line, and I'm really conflicted about this one because I like the second sentence in here that was added. But if you, if you take out the schools, we're just talking about coordination. We're not talking about control. Mass General Law protects the schools in Mass General Law in many, many ways. As we saw that today, we voted on the school budget first, and then through a compromise and negotiation, it came the other way to the town budget. So I just am against this Article 28 for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes, my name is David Martel, 15 Durham Road. I was the chair of the Charter Review Committee, out of which evolved the amendment that's before you now. Take it from me, we met regularly for about two years, spirited discussions, including Mr. Landon and input from all town departments. This is the conclusion we came to, and I urge that this be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Again, Roger Wojcik, 29 Burns Meadow. I was the chair of the Original Charter Commission. Pete Landon's recollection is remarkably accurate. I would support leaving the existing arrangement of things the way it is and vote "no" on this article.
All right, any further discussion? This motion requires a two-thirds majority vote for charter amendments. All those in favor of the motion under Article 28, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. Those opposed? I declare a two-thirds majority affirmative vote.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain, the fee to and/or permanent and/or temporary easements for public way purposes, including without limitation for the construction, alteration, installation, maintenance, improvement, repair, replacement, and/or relocation of rights of way, sidewalks, walkways, driveways, drainage utilities, guardrails, slopes, grading, rounding, landscaping, and other appurtenances and/or facilities to undertake improved pedestrian and bicycle facilities leading to and from the Blueberry Hill Elementary School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and you may speak to it, Mr. Gold?
Through funding approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, proposed improvements to provide enhanced access to and from the Blueberry Hill Elementary School include the construction of a sidewalk along the south side of Bliss Road, that's on the high school side, and a by-tune minister path along the east side of Blueberry Hill Road, that's where the ballfields are, which require easements.
Any further discussion? You will notice that this is one of those motions that differs slightly from the article. We shall come to a vote. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes by unanimous affirmative vote. Article 30, Mr. Gold?
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire the following easements for the purpose of constructing, using, and maintaining infrastructure installations known as the North Interceptor Relocation Project, the project. Temporary easements, nine parcels totaling 6,123 square feet. Permanent easements, four parcels totaling 12,396 square feet. Further, that the Select Board is authorized to acquire these easements or modifications of these easements or other required interests in land for the project, although all legal means, which include without limitation donations, purchases, or eminent domain takings. The subject parcels are currently identified as parcel PE-1, parcel PE-2, parcel PE-3, parcel PE-4, parcel TE-1, parcel TE-2, parcel TE-3, parcel TE-4, parcel TE-5, parcel TE-6, partial TE-7, partial TE-8, and partial TE-9 on a plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Long Meadow, Massachusetts, Prepared for the Town of Long Meadow, Easement Plan, Western Drive and Severn Street, dated September 16th, 2020, by Sherman Frederick LLC Land Surveying and Engineering.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and you may speak to it, Mr. Gold?
Yes, the North Interceptor conveys sewage from the area west of Long Meadow Street from the Springfield Line down to Emerson Road. This section of sewer system is mostly inaccessible as it is located on the slope of budding Interstate 91. It is old and in poor condition and very difficult to maintain when it blocks and overflows. The new design moves the sewer line off the piers and into the backyards of the homeowners on Severn Street. By doing this, the pipe will be protected and more accessible for line maintenance.
Any further discussion? This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. The motion passes by declaration, two-thirds majority vote. Affirmative vote. Article 30, I'm sorry, Mr. Gold?
Yes.
For motion?
I'd like to propose that we consider Articles 31, 32, and 33 in a grouping as Consent Agenda Number 6, unless the town meeting decides to pull any articles out of the Consent Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, if there's any "hold," yell out "hold." 31, 32, a "hold" on 32, 33. So we shall come to a vote on Articles 31 and 33. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by unanimous affirmative vote. One more. Mr. Gold, you may state the motion on Article 32.
Yes, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 3A, which deals with short-term rentals operating in the town of Long Meadow, and to set the excise tax on such rentals at 6.00%.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded, and you may speak to it?
Yes, this article was approved at the May 14th, 2019 Annual Town Meeting in Article 35. However, through a procedural matter, was never implemented by the state. This new law, state law, MGL, Chapter 64G, Section 3A, as amended, allows municipalities to adopt local room occupancy excise taxes up to 6% of total rent on short-term rentals, such as Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera. The town has been made aware of a growing number of homes being offered for short-term rentals and wants to be able to have the regulatory resources to address any impacts on the community.
Any further discussion? Go ahead. I'm sorry, you can go line up? There's somebody lining up now?
Hi, Marissa, 7 Briar Cliff Road. I just had a question about the any impacts. Could you clarify and, like, specify what sort of impacts you're expecting because of these long-term and short-term rentals?
Thank you. Would the town manager be able to know who would answer that question on the impacts?
This is not an approval or a disapproval of allowing short-term rentals. This is simply that there's a tax mechanism that the town can collect the revenue off of a short-term rental, similar to a hotel tax and meals tax.
Does that address the question? Does that address your question? Okay, thank you. Next question?
Okay, how do you define a short?
I'm sorry, name and address, please.
Kathy Mullins, 123 Wheel Meadow Drive. How do you define a short-term rental?
Ms. Simmons? One moment, please. Mark, Mr. Gold? Would you like to address the question? Mr. Gold?
I'm presuming that Mass General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 38, does the definition for us. I haven't read that law, but I assume that that's what the definition, where the definition is.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Ezra Kane, 134 Williamsburg Drive. Just a question here. How would the tax be collected? Would it be assessed on the property tax, or would the owner of Airbnb have to write a check to the town separate from the property tax?
Mr. Gold, do you have the answer, or should I go to Mr. Pasturzik?
No.
Mr. Pasturzik?
Actually, the owner of the property is going to have to register with the state, just as similar to the meals tax. They'll be sending the money to the state first, and then it'll come back to the town of Long Meadow.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, Ezra Kane again, 134 Williamsburg Drive. I'm just opposed to this measure because Airbnb, that type of operation, the space being put up for rent is not really put up by people running a business. It's kind of more of a side gig, so they might not have, you know, the resources or something, or be registered as a business to start paying tax in a way that like a restaurant would, so that'd be my concern.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. Thank you. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. You have a question?
Yeah. Is it, okay, we're on. Can I ask, can I move that we dispense with the reading of Article 34 and use the language in the, in the warrant?
I believe that's going to happen.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Gold?
I move in terms of the article, for Article 34 is printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? There's a couple of seconds. The motion's been made and seconded, and you may speak to it, Mr. Gold?
The current law refers to the functions and duties of two distinct town bodies, the Long Meadow Historic District Commission and the Long Meadow Historical Commission. The proposed version of the bylaw 2-805 contains language relating only to the Long Meadow Historic District Commission, while a future proposed bylaw 2-810 will contain language relating only to the Long Meadow Historical Commission. This necessary update will allow for more clarity in the bylaws relating to the functions of both commissions.
All right, any further discussion? This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. This is approved by unanimous affirmative vote. Article 35.
I move the town vote to amend Article 4, Section B, Subsection 1.1A of the zoning bylaws of the town by deleting the following in its entirety: the renting of bedroom space by the week, or the furnishing of table board by the week to not more than four persons other than members of the family.
Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded, and you may speak to it?
The building department receives complaints on a regular basis from residents about neighbors renting rooms in their homes to unknown individuals. The complaint is that this practice is a safety issue, not knowing who is living next door to them, and constant turnover of guests. Another issue is residents renting separate dwelling units in their homes and claiming that they are only renting rooms. By deleting this paragraph in its entirety, we would be responsive to the residents' concerns By deleting this paragraph in its entirety, we would be responsive to the residents' concerns by disallowing this practice.
Planning Board recommendation for Article 35? Do you have that?
Okay, new title, Walter Gunn, Long Meadow Planning Board. The Planning Board voted to recommend Article 35.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Ezra Kane, 134 Williamsburg Drive. I do have a question. If the town was, or if the meeting was to approve the motion, how would that affect, like Airbnb, VRBO-type rental outfits? And wouldn't that make Article 32, that we just passed, would that null the ability for the town to collect that 6% tax?
I don't know whether the Planning Board or the Town Manager's Office. Planning Board, would you be able to address that? Somebody from the Planning Board?
We're assuming it wouldn't, because I'm assuming that rental of an Airbnb, for example, would be the entire home. It's not with, usually with a resident present. I think this came from the Building Department, was brought to the Planning Board via the Select Board to address, I guess there's been some problematic rentals in town. I have to say, this was not a unanimous vote of approval by the Planning Board. If somebody went on and saw our discussion of this on the website, there was one dissent. We did consider that there could be other, this might be too restrictive, that what we were doing was addressing perhaps a couple of specific problems in Town of Long Meadow, and this could have greater effects on people who would like to rent a room, say to a Bay Path College student who's perfectly happy compliant and the neighbors are happy with the person. So I think I'd leave this up to legislative body. We're not 100% for this.
Thank you. And your follow-up?
Yeah, in the further discussion on the article, it says, "Another issue is residents renting separate dwelling units in their homes and claiming that they are only renting rooms." But if I had like an in-law apartment on my property, that's separate dwelling, and I want to put that up on Airbnb.
That's illegal, that's illegal right now.
Hold on a second, Mr. Gunn.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Wouldn't, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I think the language is clear there, that if you had a second dwelling on your property and you want to list that on Airbnb, this law, or well, this article and the change of the bylaw would prevent that.
Is that a question or just a statement?
Answer the question, I can answer it.
You wanted an answer, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Gunn.
Yeah, according to the current zoning bylaws in Long Meadow, you're only allowed a primary residence, which means one dwelling, one family. We've never been able to pass a town meeting what's called an accessory dwelling. That would be your second dwelling. There's a few in town that were grandfathered, so there are people that do have rental apartments, but they're grandfathered before this bylaw wanted to affect years ago, and it's a separate bylaw just regarding that you can only have a primary residence.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion?
Ann Wheeler, 29 Ridgeway Circle. I am deeply concerned about the subtext of this law.
Uh-oh. Hold on one second. Thank you. I'm sorry, lights are not supposed to go out.
In our current cultural moment of socio and economic and racial profiling, to pass any sort of measure that put, quote, "guests" in air quotes, I strongly suspect that those guests would be people of color and people who otherwise did not meet the visual dominant aesthetic of Long Meadow. I am leaving this minute meeting early. I'm a professor at Springfield College, and I have an African-American young man who's coming to stay with us for six weeks while he finishes his teaching licensure, and I strongly suspect that laws like this would allow that young man to be perceived as a guest or an outsider, and I do not think we should pass this right now, especially in our current cultural moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I don't know what the question is.
If you have a question, go to that one.
I have a comment.
If you're opposed, go to the red. If you're in favor, go to the green. And name and address, please.
Susan Goldman, 75 Meadowbrook Road. I can't speak to legality. I can't speak to the experience of being on a street for 43 years, where over recent years, we have a boarding house across the street. Guests in and out. The issue is not what color they are or what religion they are. The issue is we don't know who they are. There are multiple guests. We have a street with many, many young children, and the young parents are very afraid to let their kids out. Several years ago, apparently, we did have a sex offender, and we were not notified. So it's very concerning. We are not trying to restrict people for our street. We just don't want boarding houses, and we want safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Hi, I'm Larry Earhard, 71 Academy Drive. I've lived in this town for over 40 years, and I've had a lot of issues at town meetings, and this has been going on for 40, and now we, all of a sudden, it shows up, and you've even got a split planning board. I know one person who has rumors, and through that, I know of these people, other people who do the same thing. A large number of them are elderly widows or elderly single women. They need this to supplement their income, and in addition, it's, they provide for them for companionship and protection. An elderly woman, being alone by herself can be daunting at times, and whenever you've got somebody with you who, and these are not sketchy people. I mean, you're not going to let someone into your house who's sketchy. I'll be honest with you. You and I know that. The person I do know of who has had people, they're primarily students at Bay Path, student nurses some local colleges, and people from, businessmen from the Boston area who are here for short periods of time and don't want to commute back and forth, so they'll stay here over the week and then go back to Boston at, on the weekend. And again, I don't believe that this is a real problem, and I don't think that we should be depriving, you know, not everybody's wealthy in this town, and some people need that money to stay in this town, and particularly the elderly, I think they like the companionship and the protection that having a guest there provides. So I would suggest that this stay the way it is, it's been the way for decades, and I see no, there's no allegation of any criminal activity, and I just don't think it's, it's kind of has a whiff of elitism about it, and I don't think we should, Long Meadow's better than that. And when asked that you deny him, turn down this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
How would this regulation-
I'm sorry, could you please state your name and address first?
Margaret Ruckus, 67 Shady Side Drive. How would this regulation be enforced? Would it be enforced by reviewing the town's census records and/or voting records?
Town Manager's Office, could you address that question, please?
It would be enforced on a complaint basis, so if someone called and made a complaint to the Building Department, they would do an investigation.
So sort of on a case-by-case, capricious basis? Okay, thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Cynthia Summer, 57 Farmington Avenue. I want to speak from my personal experience. My grandmother had a border in her house in another town, and it gave us great peace of mind to know that she wasn't living alone, and she had some income coming in to help her with her house. I also live on Farmington Avenue for over 30 years, and we had two people, one neighbor right next door and one a couple houses away, who had borders in their house. And like you said, one of them had some Bay Path students, they were great, but the ones living right next door to me, I met every one of them. The borders were my neighbors, as well as my neighbor who actually owned the house. One, many of you met, was a young man who worked in Community Market. One was a woman in nursing school, studying for her exams, and the other worked for one of the local companies that a lot of you know. So they were great people. I met them all, I knew them all. It was a win-win. It let, like the gentleman said, people have extra income to be able to remain in their houses, and the people who were the renters were neighbors. I think this is a great thing. I think because Long Meadow lacks affordable housing, this is also one way that we can provide some affordable housing to people, and I think it's really important that we try to support younger people who don't have as much money and are on their way up in the world. So I am opposed to this.
Thank you. Further discussion? We'll usually try to alternate those in favor and those opposed, so if there's anybody in line in favor, Mike, it's your turn now.
Susan Goldman, 75 Meadowbrook. Our objection, again, is to safety. Several weeks ago, the borders were sitting on the curb drinking. This is the kind of behavior we are not happy with. I'm certainly not objecting to a senior having a companion or to a vetted Bay Path student, absolutely, but we don't want random people who are not vetted, who have, we have no certainty of safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Kathy Mullins, 123 Wheel Meadow Drive. I feel that the language in this is very restrictive and impinges upon the homeowner's right to have a tenant if they live in their home and they're present. It also takes away time from law enforcement for bigger problems than this. Many of these tenants are engineers, working professionals, and college students are not likely to go around hurting people. I think that this language is restrictive, especially impinging on the privacy of homeowners who want to have guests visiting with them. It's an invasion of privacy. What if a family is having someone home from college for a week? Give us a break. Also, it's, I think the language is very restrictive and barring homeowners from having the right of people to have a long-term tenant in their home. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes, Greg Merchant, 111 Meadowbrook Road. To those comments in opposition, look at the wording again. This is one bedroom, one week. Bay Path residents or anyone at any socioeconomic level that is coming to our town can commit to more than one week. What you get with a one-week rental are transients, and they're often have trouble in their lives. I'm not unsympathetic. I've spent a lot of time in my life helping those in need in our community, but I live on the street where affected, and I can tell you, just statistically, I can back it. Our Long Meadow police are on my street regularly, for years. Why are they there? Because there's a problem. So I put that to you in terms of evidence, there is a safety issue. So there's no problem with making a longer commitment. It's only those who can't commit, they have no stake in our community, and that's what I love about Long Meadow. Everyone here, at any level, we pay high taxes here because we like that everyone is committed to this community. These people have no commitment.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you. Larry Starr, 81 Williamsburg. The amendment actually is to delete that language. It's not implementing more than one week. It's deleting that language completely, so that there was now no standard. I'm ambivalent about this particular amendment, because I think it's poorly worded. We've heard what both sides of the problem are. I think that perhaps it would be better to spend some time, maybe have some people on both sides, to sit down, figure out exactly what is the issue, and how can we write this language to better deal with that issue. Having someone rent a student for a period of time shouldn't really be a big problem in one room. Having a boarding house should be a problem, and somewhere between there, there can be words that are written to deal with that. This just doesn't do it, and that's the problem. For that reason, I would suggest we vote it down now, send it back to be reworked, come back with much better language, and next time, we can look at perhaps a much better version. Thank you.
Further discussion? Sir at the green mic? Person at the green mic?
Hello, I'm 90 Meadowbrook Road.
And what's your name?
Matthew Retchen.
Go ahead.
As a homeowner, we are affected by the situation. We do not know who these people are that are living next door to us. This day and age, you have a lot of people that commit heinous crimes, and it is nice to know who your neighbors are, especially living in a nice town like Long Meadow. I want to be able to turn my back and know that my two little girls are safe, and I want to know who my neighbors are, as I think anyone else would. New people coming into a home right next door to us every week, new people, not knowing who they are, making my six-year-old feel uncomfortable a couple weeks ago when somebody was staring at her, having her come up to me, does not make me feel good. So unless you live in a house next door to this, you probably aren't affected by it or even care, but when you have little kids, you want to know who your neighbors are, and it's not right. So thank you.
Further discussion?
Madam Moderator, thank you. David Marinelli, 9 Overbrook Lane. In Article 32, we approved an excise tax on short-term rentals. In Article 35, we're asked to consider outlawing short-term rentals. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this proposed zoning change. No member of the public with firsthand knowledge of the problem that led to this article spoke at the hearing. I spoke against changing our zoning in this way. I don't have any plans to rent rooms in my house, but I do feel the need, sorry, I do not feel the need to restrict another person's property rights in this way. When my wife and I were in Omaha for a meeting, hotel space was short, and we rented a room for three nights in an Airbnb in a nice person's house in a nice neighborhood, and we were very glad that the neighbors welcomed us, people that they didn't know. I like to think that visitors to our area, perhaps parents coming for their child's graduation, would feel similarly welcome. If these unknown individuals are engaging in illegal behavior, then we already have ways to deal with that. I urge you to vote against this bylaw change. Thank you.
Thank you.
I only want to correct one-
Name and address again, please.
Larry Earhard, 71 Academy Drive. I just want to correct one misconception. Students and businessmen, they're not there usually like Airbnb for one week. These are pretty generally two or three months or something like that, or a semester. It's not a one week and you're out kind of thing most of the time. So just, that was a misconception, I think, that was made earlier. I want to correct that.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to come to a vote? This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor of the article under 35, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion fails by two-thirds declaration. Article 36.
Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The current zoning bylaw provides for non-criminal disposition. However, if these fines go unpaid, there is very little resource to collect said fines. Adoption of MGL 40, Section 58, provides a mechanism to lien the property for those unpaid violations. The same section of the MGL was adopted by the general bylaw, Article 5, Section 900, Registration and Maintenance of Foreclosed Properties.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This requires a two-thirds majority vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, go ahead. So, sorry.
Again, Walter Gunn, Long Meadow Planning Board. The Planning Board did vote unanimously to recommend this warrant article and zoning bylaw change. It's sort of a no-brainer right now. We have no mechanism to actually collect on these violations without going through a lengthy court process. This would put a lien on people's property, so when you went to refinance or sell, you would have to pay up.
Thank you. All right, this requires a two-thirds majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Unanimous affirmative vote. Article 37.
Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
You may speak to it.
There is no definition of commercial vehicle in the zoning bylaw definitions. Adding the definition provides clarity and consistency in zoning compliance and enforcement.
Any further discussion? Is it Planning Board?
Don Holland, Planning Board Chair. The Planning Board voted three to two to endorse this article. Those that voted in favor of this article felt that there was a need for a definition of commercial vehicle. As Mr. Foster said, there's no definition of commercial vehicle anywhere else in the bylaws. The two people who voted against the bylaw had a couple concerns- The two people who voted against the bylaw had a couple of concerns. One was the way that this bylaw was worded. It was too broad. If you had a decal on your car, such as AAA or Walt Disney World, you would be violating this law, this article is written. And what if you're a tradesman, where you have a vehicle too large to fit into a garage? You'd be violating this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This requires a two-thirds, oh, go ahead.
How is this?
Name and address again.
I would, I'll give my name, but depending on the answer, I'm going to give some examples, and I would rather not identify in any way those owners of such examples. So my name is Margaret Rockus.
Well, hold on one moment there. Just as an FYI, you gave your address in a previous.
I know, but nobody remembers it, probably.
I do.
What do I do?
So my question is, how?
Hold on one moment. Well, we do require it, so please state it.
All right. 67 Shady Side Drive.
Thank you.
What is the enforcement mechanism for this bylaw?
Ms. Simmons?
Enforcement is done by complaint. So a complaint comes into the building department. They go and investigate.
I see. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
So I spent about an hour and a half yesterday, Margaret Rockus, 67 Shady Side Drive. I spent about an hour and a half yesterday reading both the town bylaws, zoning bylaws, and then the specific zoning bylaws. And I do a running route. So I'm not going to identify any of these particular places. There is a home that most certainly has a large structure attached to it, which could not possibly be a normal household-type structure. Somehow, that's not permitted by the bylaws. There is a bylaw saying you can't have a dumpster outside your home for more than 60 days.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rockus, I'm going to interrupt you. This is about the definition of a commercial vehicle. So if you could get to a discussion of that.
My point is, my point is, there are a number of bylaws that may or may not have a good purpose, but they're not enforced, or they're capriciously enforced. This would be another capriciously enforced bylaw. If you don't like your neighbor, narc on him. If you like your neighbor, look the other way. I don't think this brings a community together. Thank you.
Further discussion? Sir?
Douglas Marats, 47 Barclay Street. I'd like to add to what she just said, too. This does create a lot of arguing and bickering between neighbors about these commercial vehicles. I understand what you're trying to do, but at the same time, you know, a lot of people need commercial vehicles for 24/7 emergency work. I work with state, federal, military, fueling systems, and it really hinders me being able to arrive on situations at an appropriate time. I know we're not voting against, trying to knock it down, but I don't, I don't see what the town's doing to, I don't know how this is helping the town in any way with these commercial vehicles. This 12,000-pound GVW, I don't know if everybody is familiar with the GVWs of trucks. 12,000 pounds is nothing. It's a very lightweight. My personal pickup is a one-ton GMC. It's a 16,000-pound GVW. Anybody that had a vehicle that was unlettered and just a personal truck that was a commercial, they would be, this would be, this would affect them. If anything, raise the GVW up to at least 18,000, and then this would get you into that, you know, heavier-duty class of trucks, which if you're trying to avoid that, then that would make more sense. But the 12,000 is just way too light. A 12,000 pound is half-ton pickup truck. Three-quarter-ton pickup truck is 14,000 to 15,000, and a one-ton is 16,000. So I mean, that's everyday pickups that people drive around. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Is there, somebody speaking in favor or opposed? If it's in favor, if there's somebody in favor of this definition, then we'll, we alternate among those who are in favor, those opposed.
Larry Goldberg, 159 Redfern Drive. I'm in favor of this because about 20 years ago, when I used to bring home a company truck, the old building inspector used to tell me I wasn't in violation because I parked on the side of my garage behind the front plane. Couple of years went by of people complaining about the truck, which you didn't know it was a tow truck, but yet it was. People went to the building inspector, the select board, the town manager, the police chief, the fire chief, all the way up the chain. I was never found to be in a problem. I chose to belly up to the bar as a resident. I spent $60,000 and built a 30-by-20 garage to conceal the tow truck that supposedly people were complaining about. This is a residential community. People don't want to see trucks that say HVAC on it or Home Improvement. I do realize that some people do need to bring them home, but we just recently dealt with the Zoning Board of Appeals with another resident bringing home a DPW truck from North Hampton. The zoning board convinced the gentleman it was not to be here. He no longer brings it home. So people are taking advantage of it. It's a residential community. 36, we just approved to enforce the fine. So now we need to agree with 37 that it will be what it should be. And as far as the other gentleman just said, I agree with his GVW, except that the average consumer wouldn't know that his, I think he said it was a white truck, is 16,000 GVW. So unless somebody opens up the door tag, a one-ton pickup, which he's right, is 12,000 or 14,000 GVW, still looks like a half-ton. So we're worried about the commercial lettered trucks that stick out and look like an advertisement and that say, hey, I'm doing business. I have a school bus two streets behind me. The guy brings it home every night. It's got pupil plates on it, it's got the sign, and it's got a backup alarm. Shouldn't be there.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Larry Starr, 81 Williamsburg. My concern again about this particular warrant article is the language. I think it's a little messy. And we've had that problem with the language being messy for the last, at least the last five or six years. One definition of sport utility vehicle, and that's particularly one that I'm concerned about, is a vehicle classified as a light truck but operated as a family vehicle. That's a Wikipedia definition. There is no definition of SUV. That's a general description of a type of car. Yet we're now adding an SUV in a term that is not defined also because we're trying to define terms. So there's an inherent problem, I think, with the language. In addition, if you have a SUV that is not a commercial vehicle and you have a magnetic sign on it, if you take the magnetic sign off, then it's not prohibited. And if you leave the magnetic sign on, it is prohibited, the same vehicle. I think that is also an issue, that someone who has a small SUV they're using as a family car, and they're doing real estate, and they put up a magnetic sign. If they don't take the magnetic sign off, they're in trouble. But if they leave it on, yes. If they don't take it off, they're in trouble. But if they take it off, they're not. So I think it still needs language proofing. Right now, I don't think it's going to solve our long-term problem that the people in favor of this have. So I would like to see language like this. I just don't think this is yet quite ready for primetime. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Colonel John Friedson, 9 Green Willow Drive. First thing, as far as being concerned that the literal interpretation would mean having a Disney sticker would mean you're in violation, I would hope that both your neighbors and the town would not be quick to react to a Disney sticker. I don't think we're that dumb. I don't think we have that kind of a problem. As far as the gross vehicle weight goes, 12,000 pounds is not small. I don't even think a Hummer H1 has that much of a GVW. Maybe it does. There are extraordinarily few, which is why I think 12,000 is probably, probably a pretty good limit, unless you want to build a garage and put it inside. What's an SUV? Well, I think one of the Supreme Court justices once said about pornography, I don't know what it is, but I know what it is when I see it. And I think a truck or an SUV with commercial lettering on it, which is what we're talking about here, something significantly and obviously a commercial vehicle, that's what's going to trigger your neighbor. That's what's going to get a reaction from a town. And that's precisely what this is intended to control. We are a residential community. I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Andrew Fox, 29 Lorenz Street. Madam Moderator, as you heard, the Planning Board vote was far from a ringing endorsement of this article. The existing bylaws already contains a definition of commercial vehicle, which is in Article 4, Section B, Subsection 1.2A of that document. Although it has never needed one before, if for some reason the bylaws now need a definition of a commercial vehicle in Section 2, then that definition should be the same as the one that already exists elsewhere in the document. Therefore, I wish to propose an amendment to Article 37 that would make the definition now proposed for bylaw Article 2 the same as the definition that already exists in bylaw Article 4.
Do you have the amendment in writing?
I do.
Can you bring it forward, please? The amendment is to see if the town will vote to amend Article 2 definitions of the zoning bylaws of the town by adding the following. Article 2 definitions: Commercial vehicle, a van or truck used in connection with a business or trade or any vehicle which has commercial lettering thereon. Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Fox. And could you speak at the green mic just to help me out? Thanks. Helps me keep straight.
This amendment would not only make the two definitions of the same thing in the same document consistent with each other, but would make the definition consistent with that of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and, most importantly, with the residential aesthetic that current residents appreciate and that prospective residents value. That is important, particularly considering that our town now has the highest tax rate in the state. The proposed amendment, which replaces the wording in the original Article 37, now makes it consistent with the definition already existing elsewhere in the bylaws, consistent with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's definition, and does not allow the expansion for more and larger trucks to be parked in residential areas. And most importantly, is consistent with the residential aesthetic that our town enjoys and that our residents current and prospective value. On the other hand, Article 37's original wording increased the allowed gross vehicle weight rating from 6,000 pounds to 12,000 pounds, which is double the Mass DOT limit and would allow a 15-foot box truck to be parked anywhere in town and would not even limit the number of these vehicles. The article's original wording is inconsistent with the definition already in the bylaws, inconsistent with the Mass DOT's definition, and is certainly inconsistent with the valued residential aesthetic of our town. I recommend a vote for the amended article and certainly not for the article as originally written.
We are discussing the amendment only. Is there discussion on the amendment? Yes.
Ezra Kame, 134 Williamsburg Drive. I recommend that the, I'm not making a motion, but I don't think that the town or this meeting here should vote on the amendment. I guess they can't say that they shouldn't vote on the original article based on our discussion currently. But the way that the article is written is not in line with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90F, which is motor vehicle law, which describes that a commercial motor vehicle weighs more than 26,001 pounds. That is the state's definition for a commercial motor vehicle. I think that the, what we were given as the original and now the amendment, nothing is in line with the way that the laws of the Commonwealth are written currently.
Okay, so you're opposed to the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? The amendment to the main motion requires a simple majority. After we vote on the amendment, we then will come to the main motion. So the proposed amendment is a simple majority. Those in favor of the amendment, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The amendment passes by majority affirmative vote. We shall now come to discussion of Article 37 as amended. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor of the article as amended, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The motion passes by two-thirds declaration. Affirmative vote. Article 38. Mr. Foster?
Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
All right. Is there a second? You may speak to it.
In reading this section as written today, if a nonconforming building was destroyed to an extent of over 50%, the building could not be rebuilt as a nonconforming building. A big percentage of the homes in Long Meadow are nonconforming due to the lack of frontage, lot size, or proximity to lot lines. Banks and other lenders question this bylaw regularly and are reluctant to loan money on such properties.
Thank you. Further discussion? I'm sorry. Planning Board recommendation. I'm jumping ahead of the gun. I'm sorry. That was not intended.
I'll just use my first name, Walter. With that said, yes, the Planning Board voted unanimously for this warrant article for the zoning bylaw change.
All right. Yes, sir.
Madam Moderator, Dave Marinelli, 9 Overbrook Lane. I move that the town amend Article 38, replacing the words "two-year" with the words "five-year." Would you like me to read the article as amended?
Yes, please.
To see if the town will vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws, Article 4, Section E, Subsection 1B, by deleting, "If the nonconforming building is destroyed by fire, explosion, act of the public enemy, act of God to the extent of 50% or more of its replacement value, it shall not be rebuilt as a nonconforming building, and any future use of the premises shall conform to the Use Regulations of the Zone in which the building and lands are located," period, and replacing that with, "If the nonconforming building is destroyed by fire, explosion, act of the public enemy, act of God to the extent of 50% or more of its replacement value, it may be rebuilt on the same footprint within a five-year timeframe, but any future use of the premises shall conform to the Use Regulations of the Zone in which the building and lands are located."
This was provided to me in writing before the meeting, so I have a copy of it already and have shared it with the clerk. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Article 38 is a good idea that would be improved with a more liberal timeframe. I give it as an example, 50 Elmwood Avenue, which was lost in a tragic fire on January 5, 2018. For whatever reason, the house has not been rebuilt, and because two years have elapsed, it appears that even with this bylaw change as originally written, the lot would stay vacant with the loss of tax revenue to the town. vacant with the loss of tax revenue to the town. One could make the case that two years is an adequate timeframe to rebuild after a fire, but I believe that circumstances could arise making this difficult. For instance, there's a current shortage of available skilled tradesmen. I would only point out that I've been trying for about four years to get my tile regrowed and haven't succeeded. I doubt if I could build a house in two years. So, for this reason, I think we should extend the timeframe. I personally would be in favor of longer than five years, but I realize that I may be in the minority, and I think five years is something doable. Thank you.
All right, we're speaking on the amendment now. Who are you? Oh, I don't recognize you with your mask and your planning board member. Okay, so there's a planning board member, and then we'll go to you at the green mic.
Josh Levine, on behalf of the planning board. When we were considering this warrant article, Mr. Marinelli spoke, and we considered having a longer time period. Ultimately decided at two years in order to not have a vacant lot for an extended amount of time. If there is a circumstance, and I understand that there may be delays in getting the house built, there are other ways of going about extending that time, we believe, such as a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And we decided against a time period longer than two years.
Yes, Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness Lane. I would like to speak in favor of the motion, of the amendment to the motion. I have extensive experience with working on property that have had casualty happen to them in excess of 50% of damage. It can easily take -- let's use an example, the tornado that happened in Springfield and up the Pioneer Valley. It could easily take six months to negotiate an insurance claim. If you have a nonconforming building, then you need an architect. If the building is within the flood plain or within Conservation Commission jurisdiction, there's extensive time period there, a few months. It can easily exceed two years to get the home completed and built in that period of time. I definitely think that two years is incredibly short for a nonconforming building in the event of wide casualty than an insurance claim for any homeowner. It is unreasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so unless there are any other speakers, we'll come to a vote on the amendment first, which requires a simple majority, and then further discussion on the main motion and a vote on that. All those in favor of the motion to amend, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion to amend is approved by majority affirmative vote. We shall now come to discussion on the main article, the main motion, as amended. Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote on the motion. This requires a 2/3 majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Unanimous affirmative vote. Mr. Foster?
Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second?
Second.
You may speak to it.
As presently written, the bylaw does not allow for a detached garage to supplement an existing light facility. A three-car garage is allowed by right in the bylaws. It does not seem fair that a resident with a small one-car garage cannot build a detachable two-car garage, so the total space would be three, as long as it meets the requirements for location and setback from the main structure and lot lines.
Thank you. Planning board recommendation?
Walter Gunn, Planning Board. Regarding Article 39, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a 2/3 majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? This passes majority -- I'm sorry, unanimous affirmative vote. Article 40. Mr. Friedman. As a note, the motion differs slightly from the printed article. Probably shouldn't. Yeah. Thanks.
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge Road. Due to concerns raised by the Planning Board for the installation of ground-mounted solar panels on front yards, it is amended that any--
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Friedman. You can just say, "I move to amend."
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I move to -- and then what you want to do. So, if it's the entire motion, you would read what you want to see happen.
Okay. Let me start over. Due to concerns raised by the Planning Board for the installation of ground-mounted solar panels on front yards, I move to amend that any narrative or diagrammatic reference to front yard installations be removed. In addition--
Mr. Friedman, if you'd like, there's two changes, right? So, you can move in terms of the article with the exception of two changes and read what those two changes are, and that might make things simpler.
Okay. So, I move to amend Article 40 to include two changes. One is the removal of the term "front" or "front yard," and also the addition of Section 6. It's added for clarification purposes.
And where is the "front," the word "front"?
In Article 40, as read, the term "front" appears in page 1 of 6, in the first paragraph, Section 1. There's a diagram on page 3.
Do you see the word "front"? Okay, so, okay, 15 feet.
And also, it appears on page 6 of 6. Now, the amended version has also been posted to the longmeadow.org website, and the amended form has been submitted to the town moderator.
All right, so what I have before me is that in paragraph 1, the sentence that reads, "Such solar panel structures shall not be closer than within 15 feet of the side property lines." Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, it's enumerated, so after number 5, there's a number 6. Solar panels shall not be installed to obstruct the view of a first-floor window or skylight. Solar panels may be installed at an elevation below the lower sill of a window master frame. Solar panels may obstruct the view of a cellar basement window. So, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, the motion differs slightly from the article that's in your warrant by those two changes, the removal of "front" and the addition of that number 6 provision about the first-floor window. Is there a second? Thank you. You may speak to it, Mr. Friedman.
Yes. Also, since the diagram is different, I produced diagram 1, and we're going to walk that down the aisle so you can see it. It's just like the diagram that appears in the warrant article, except any reference to a solar zone in the front yard has been eliminated. First, a point of information. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 3. This section of Mass General Law addresses subjects which zoning may not regulate. As this language suggests, this section of the statute describes several uses that cannot be regulated in the same manner as typical residential, commercial, or other uses. For example, limits on the ability to regulate religious uses, agricultural uses, and daycare operations are included in this section of the statute. Paragraph 9 of this section addresses solar energy systems as follows. Chapter 48, Section 3, Paragraph 9. No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. The installation of ground-mounted solar panels on the side lot lines of a home is in conflict with Long Meadow zoning laws, zoning bylaws, Section B, uses in resident zones. Long Meadow officially only allows solar panels on roofs and ground-mounted in backyards. Having said that, once again, based on the concerns raised by the Planning Board for the installation of ground-mounted solar panels in front yards, this proposed amendment, I consider to make this more reasonable. Once again, I live in this town. I would like these installations to be reasonable and respectable. So, in the way that these are being mounted, first, there's going to be a much greater limitation on the number of panels that can be mounted. The panels will be mounted, once again, on the side yards in a manner that's parallel to the foundation. If we could just walk this down the aisle so people can see it. It also requires a setback of 15 feet from your property line. It also requires that panels be set five feet from your foundation to allow access to work on your house, to paint it, to things like that. I've discussed this with the fire department, and their view, as long as it complies with code standards, then they're okay with it. The provision also allows a review by neighbors, by emergency officials, if there's any issues with it. There's also a constraint there that the solar panels can't create a blind spot for traffic if it happens to be near an intersection. The idea is to encourage the use of solar, albeit on a more limited basis. Homeowners might elect to install these systems or install much of it themselves. Those parts that require licensed professionals, that would still be true, and the installation would require a building permit and electric permit. So, the idea is to encourage solar, to allow solar systems to be installed at likely reduced costs, but also do so, be done in ways that are more aesthetic, that are more satisfactory to butters. It is noted about six years ago, a very similar standard was established in nearby East Hampton, Massachusetts, and the measure calls for the panels to be shrouded in lattice and also to be surrounded by evergreen shrubbery. And this mock-up represents what is being proposed. The idea is for the solar panels to camouflage themselves so that very little of the structure for the panels would be visible. Once again, the idea is to make this more aesthetically satisfactory, so it's compatible with the butters.
Thank you. Any planning board recommendation?
Hello again, Walter Gunn, Long Meadow Planning Board. As the article was presented in the warrant, and I'm sure since there's not much of a deviation with the proposed warrant, with that said, the Long Meadow, the Planning Board voted unanimously against this article. The major reason being, we felt this is something that should be brought up on a case-by-case basis, and that's what we have our Zoning Board of Appeals for. Currently, it might work on one property, but generally, with our nonconforming town, it might be a lot of places. Even with the side yard provision would not work. So, we think, again, it should be another, what do we call it, a Zoning Board of Appeals probably situation where they can do it case-by-case. And there might have to be language written into our bylaws to allow for that.
I'm sorry?
Point of information?
A point of information?
Yes. I discussed this matter with the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they told me very directly that they could not take up this issue because of the way the language is written, that this matter needs to come before the town and the matter that I'm doing it now. And so, the idea of seeking some type of variance is not possible.
What is your point of information?
Point of information, that what is being recommended by the representative from the Planning Board is not possible.
All right, we'll open it up to the floor. Go ahead.
I'd like to make an amendment. Is that appropriate at this time?
You can make an amendment, yes?
Okay.
And in writing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My amendment is to delete the word "evergreen" in Article 40, Section 4. Would you like me to--
Name and address first.
Oh, sorry. Cynthia Summer, 57 Farmington Avenue. So, I want to amend Article 40, Section 4, and delete the word "evergreen." Would you like me to read it without the word "evergreen"?
Can you tell me what paragraph, please?
Section 4, number--
I'm sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
Deleting the word "evergreen" and leaving shrubbery.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's okay.
That's--
That's sufficient, okay. Do you want me to speak to why?
Pardon me?
There's three-- I have it here across--
Yes, thank you. Let's do that. Okay. So, Section 6 does not deal with shrubbery.
If "evergreen" is in Section 6, just keep shrubbery.
I was wrong.
Okay, I didn't think--
All right, you may proceed. Is there a second on the motion to delete the word "evergreen"? All right.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Many of us in Long Meadow, and indeed in the nation and the world, are trying to bring back the declining numbers of birds and insects that are disappearing from our woods and our yards. If you know of the work of Doug Talamay and Homegrown National Park, you would know about this. The way we do this is that we plant native species of bushes and trees, and these are species that have co-evolved with local insects over centuries, and these trees and shrubs are the food sources for the caterpillars and the birds. The article as written would not allow us to continue this important work. It specifies that only evergreens must be planted, and to add insult to injury, the species mentioned, the arborvitae and boxwood, are not native plants. So, in reality, what they want is for the shrubs to grow to cover the lattice. And in fact, if you planted boxwoods, it would take years and years for them to grow up to the lattice. But if you planted a nice native nine-bark or a serviceberry, they would grow much faster. The shrubs would be beautiful. You'd have like white flowers on a serviceberry in, you know, the spring and beautiful-- You'd have like white flowers on a serviceberry in, you know, the spring, and beautiful all color on the ninebark. And so I really have proposed that we strike the word "evergreens." We should be allowed to plant any kind of shrub we want on our property, just as we are now, as long as it, you know, hides the lattice and it doesn't look bad to your neighbors. So I am hoping that, you know, that this small amendment would, it doesn't do anything to change the height requirement or the fact that you have to plant them close together or anything like that. It would still meet the requirements of the article, and I urge you all to correct this oversight and support our homeowners' rights to plant the plants that we want on our property and to help bring back the birds and insects. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now discussing the amendment only. The amendment is to delete the word "evergreen" wherever it appears in this article, in the motion. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? The motion to amend requires a simple majority, and just for ease in being able to see the votes, I will ask that the speakers go to the seats, and that way I will be able to see the vote as it occurs more easily. Thank you. Appreciate that. So the motion to amend is a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion to amend has been approved by majority affirmative vote. We shall now come to a discussion, and if you could kindly put yourselves back in the same queue order, I'd appreciate that. We'll discuss the motion as amended. And, sir at the mic?
Stephen Metz, 171 Coventry Lane. And this is just a request for clarification. As I look at the article, there's basically, there's actually three references to the front. The first is in the first paragraph that just describes the motion. The second one is in Paragraph 1, and the third one is the picture. And if the front is taken out, it doesn't make sense grammatically. So I was wondering if it really mean, in the first two lines, the second line, to be within the strikeout front and/or, which would make it readable?
Is that, as it's understood, Mr. Friedman?
Yes, and that is the form that the moderator also has.
Well, the same comment. My question also, are you going to limit the picture that says the front? Because it doesn't seem applicable anymore.
The motion that I have deletes all mention of the word "front," including in the diagram.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess that brings up a, but there's no reason to have the diagram.
The diagram that appears on the placard out front is part of the revision of Diagram 1. So because the revisions are both narrative and diagrammatic, this diagram that you see in front was also forwarded to the moderator.
Thank you. At the red mic?
Mary Connors, 94 Meadow Road. And because most of our homes, especially on the north and south end of the street, town, are all non-conforming, and there are open spaces, thank goodness, with trees already, this would encourage some homeowners to put arrays on their side yards that are not big enough for a building lot, that are non-building lots. And it would, I think, deter, you know, take away from the aesthetics of the neighborhoods. And many side yards, homes are within five or 10 feet of another dwelling, even though that second dwelling might have side yard. I think, again, it would take away from homeowners that are constrained within their lot size. So I am opposed to putting solar panels on side yards or front yards.
Thank you. We're going to be going through the citizens who wish to speak first.
Can I respond to that?
No.
Okay.
Colonel John Freedson, 9 Green Willow Drive. A question or an observation? My understanding, given a little bit of research, on what does 9 kW of solar panels mean? And please jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but the research I did indicated that right now to get 9 kW with current technology is approximately 600 square feet. So that limit right now would be 30 by 20 feet of solar panel, a little bit larger than the demonstration we have up there in front. Now, that being said, and whether or not you agree or like the aesthetics of 600 square feet of solar panel, I question why you would put a limit based on capacity. Solar panels are increasing in efficiency every year, and that's only going to continue to happen. I think what we're trying to do here, the 9 kW may have been intended to put some sort of boundary on the size. So I'm asking a question, if that's what your intent is, why would you restrict and say stop somebody from charging their car? Because a standard house takes about 9 kW to run.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
First, it was intended to limit the area of the array. Once this is going on the side of a home, it's also noted that there are many instances where homes do not have enough side setback distance. They don't have the 15 feet. They're closer than that. So they wouldn't be able to install any solar panels at all. Your side setback distances have to be sufficient to meet the requirements of this standard that's being presented to you. So yes, it's true that there are many homes in Long Meadow that their side lots are not big enough to accommodate the panels based on this description.
I'm sorry, that's not my usual question.
Excuse me, there's no cross-examination?
That doesn't answer my question.
The question is that by limiting it to 9 kW or less, which would be about 30 panels, to specifically limit it so that there would not be an overabundance of panels. We want to make this reasonable so that a person could install a reasonable number of panels without overdoing it, without being objectionable to neighbors.
I'll get back in line. It's okay.
Brett Lukasik, 38 Crescent Road. Question I have for you is, you've mentioned before that the state makes it illegal, basically, for us to restrict or make it inconvenient to have solar panels. With this amendment, with this, you know, article, does this say that this is the only way we can put solar panels in? If we don't pass this, does this mean that people have solar panels wherever they want?
Mr. Friedman?
What's being presented is what I feel is a reasonable compromise to allow a limited number of solar panels to be installed in such a way as to conform with the side lot lines of a property, to effectively camouflage the panels so that they're not objectionable. A ground-mounted system typically, you would see the structure, you would see the supports, you would see, this would conceal all of that. So all you see is the glass or the front of the panels, and you would see lattice and shrubbery.
Can I follow?
Mr. Friedman, just to address the question of if this is not approved, could people put their solar panels up?
Presently, no. If this is not approved today, solar panels, based on the present regulations in Long Meadow, could only be installed on your roof and/or your backyard.
Okay.
Follow-up question?
Yeah, as far as this lattice work here, is that lattice on the front also required? I don't know how would the light get into it with the front lattice here? I mean, there isn't, it's restricting the amount of light coming in, isn't it? No, no, I mean the lattice itself. Wouldn't that restrict the amount of light coming into your solar panel?
Mr. Friedman?
No. This is the solar panel. This down below is the area below the solar panel. So by having the shrubbery and lattice does not reduce...
But the lattice up here...
So it's the, it's the top panel?
This blue represents a solar panel.
Oh, okay.
This is a mock-up.
So that would just be a big piece of glass, you know?
Right. So all you would see, what's blue here represents either a photovoltaic solar panel or a thermal solar panel.
Okay, because it would look a lot better with the lattice, to tell you the truth.
Okay, next up.
Andrew Burkey, 32 Williston Drive. I think I'm more confused now than I was when I got in line. And I'm hoping that I can get some clarification on what is currently allowed and where that's found versus what just changes. Because with the deletion of the word "front," as written with nothing else around, it means we can put them anywhere in our front yard because there's no restriction. And then you said that there is a way to, or there is already something that restricts putting solar panels in other spots, and I just, I'd like to know where that is, I guess.
Let me see if we can get somebody from the planning board to specify, to answer the question about the front issue. Can you answer that or no? Just in terms of what is currently permitted, Mr. Friedman, I'm going to ask Mr. Gunn.
Hi, Walter Gunn. No, right now, nothing is permitted in the front of your house. And your side yard, same thing again, only, not even a accessory dwelling. So I think even a garden shed at this point is required to be behind your property or behind your house. So that would be called the backyard.
And do you want to address the other part of his question? Yes.
Yeah. Back in 2000, there was a revision to the bylaws, which included any solar panels or structures of solar panels, that they could not be installed either in your side yards or your front yards, only the back or the roof. And it came down to the definition of the word "structure." So there was the, there was the general condition of the bylaws, and then way down below, there was a definition of "structure," which included solar panels. And so that this article today is in response to that, that solar panels should be allowed or could be allowed on the side yards in ways that make it more aesthetic and camouflage the panels so that they're much less objectionable.
Thank you. Next question?
Yes. Roger Woljak, 29 Burns Meadow again. What I'm looking at is apparently a mock-up of some of the plans that we've been presented with in our warrant article, number one. Number two, it appears to be in our engineering model. I would like to know, one, has any of those panels been built at all? If so, if they've been built, where? That's number two. Number three, where can I get copies of the photographs of the panels? And three, knowing what I know about engineering, and that's been my background for some 35 years, what I'm looking at here, even as a model, is likely to change so much that presenting a model to say this is what you want to approve represents great risk to the town as well as to you as the owner, or the operator, or the developer. So number one, what is the status of the technology? Number two, have any of these systems been built? Number three, are there photographs that you can show the people here? And perhaps when we see you next year, you can bring us up to date, and we can come closer to taking a vote on, in a positive way.
Mr. Friedman?
This is a mock-up. The size that you see here is typical of a typical residential photovoltaic solar panel. In the description, there was a significant range of the size and width of panels that could be used. Once again, about six years ago, the community of East Hampton, Massachusetts, adopted this very policy, allowing solar panels to be installed on side...
Mr. Friedman, if you can refer directly to his questions on the status of the technology?
The status of technology, now, once I teach alternative energy, I've done so for 15 years at Western New England University. Photovoltaic solar panels, the standards are very consistent. The thermal solar panels, the standards are very consistent. Panels could be three foot by seven, four foot by eight. Photovoltaic panels, approximately three and a half feet by five and a half feet in length. Those dimensions are very established. But in terms of the position of this article, if panels happen to change in somewhat inefficiency or size, this article addresses it. This is a mock-up. In nowhere are we limiting ourselves to a specific make, model, or particular size of a panel. The article addresses...
Thank you.
...the needs of whatever system is being presented, and those designs may not be the same.
Thank you. Is there a follow-up?
The home with an installation like you described here in this warrant article, have you ever built a solar panel installation like what you describe in this article in any home? Or is this, we still in an engineering paper pencil and mock-up status?
The technology for ground-mounted panels is very well established.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry, so have you ever built...
Have you ever put one together?
Okay.
Three dimensions and shown to somebody that in fact it looks like this and it works? Or is we still in the theory of development and the model-making thing?
Thank you.
And expecting us to approve...
Thank you.
...something that in fact people might even think is commercially available when we may be a mile and a half away from that?
The warrant article on page four actually shows a photograph.
I'm sorry, let's, I'll address, I'll get the question addressed.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman, the question is, have you ever built what is proposed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Where is it?
I'm sorry, we're getting into cross-examination here and...
I am an engineer. I am not an installer of solar equipment. Having said that, though, there's a ground-mounted system at Western New England University that I built about 11 years ago. And then there are many ground-mounted systems that exist throughout our area...
Thank you.
...that are readily available.
We have two more people who are in line. I'd like to get those folks.
All right. Still, Colonel John Freedson, still at 9 Green Willow Drive. First, I'm in favor of solar power, absolutely. Secondly, we need to understand that the way this is phrased, we're agreeing under current technology to installations of up to 600 square feet. I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just saying, you understand what you're being asked to approve.
Do you have a question, sir?
I'm getting there.
Okay. I mean, if you could, we've been here for a while, so I just want to try to...
Third, I strongly suggest to the proponent of this that you submit a quick change. Instead of making this 9 kW, which is a standard house without provision for supporting an electric car, instead of restricting this, and we'll have to revisit it a few years from now, make it to 600 square feet. Do not limit the amount of power that can be generated, because this doesn't support a house and a car, and five years from now, that much space probably will. So it's a suggestion, it's your amendment, your article. Just a thought.
At the red mic?
Armin Ray, 96 Shady Side Drive, Long Meadow. I got to agree with my friend over here that I think when he started there, it was muddy as anything, and it's just gotten even muddier as we've gone along. The language of the amendment was hard to understand, not the amendment, of the original motion being amended to take out the front, just...
It wasn't amended? So as I said before...
But of the main motion, the changing of it from the printed article to today is confusing enough. Secondly, the mock-ups now not being the mock-ups gets even more, I think, confusing to the average person on the floor. I think I'm really in favor of solar, and I'd love to see people, you know, with more renewable energy sources. But I just think this is the wrong motion at the wrong time. It needs to be fully flushed out, and I think that we should vote no for that reason, with the reason that people could come bring this back at fall town meeting or next town meeting, when it's properly flushed out and the questions that everybody had here are resolved.
Thank you. Are we ready to come to a vote?
Yeah, it's going to move the question.
No, no, just go sit down. The motion as amended needs a two-thirds majority vote. Would all those in favor of the motion, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, raise your yellow cards? Thank you. The motion fails by two-thirds declaration. Negative vote. Negative vote. Okay. Here's the main motion, okay? Here's the amendment, which matches combat. That's majority, come to vote for that. Okay. Article 41, the motion, the, I'm sorry. Okay. Is Mr. Pericolosi here? There we go. This is another case where the motion differs slightly from the printed article. Go ahead. Name and address?
Craig Pericolosi, 97 Cooley Drive. Do you want me to read it all?
Yes.
Okay. I move to amend 6-314 of the general bylaws, billboard signs, and other advertising devices to allow for business advertising on limited Long Meadow parks and recreation athletic fields. These include Wolf Swamp Field Complex, Bliss Park, and Turner Park. A temporary signs related to sponsorship for the purpose of generating third-party funding for park and recreation enhancements shall be limited to park-zoned areas as found within the town's bylaw, town zoning laws. Said additional funding will fall under the purview of the Parks and Recreation Board. B, it is the intent of the Long Meadow Park and Recreation Board to reserve its full rights and discretion to reject or refuse placement or required removal of any and all commercial messages or advertisements that do not comply with the guidelines set forth by the Park and Recreation Department. C, to the extent that any such messages and advertisements are accepted is an intent of the Park and Recreation Board to reserve and exercise the right of full editorial control over the placement, content, size, appearance, and wording, and to determine and prohibit those that are deemed inappropriate.
All right. Is there a second? All right, you may speak to it, Mr. Pericolosi.
Okay. The purpose of this policy and its related practices and guidelines is to, is to define the conditions upon which commercial messaging and advertisement may be placed at the Wolf Swamp Field Complex, Bliss Park, and Turner Park for the purposes of providing additional financial resources to support the following. One, additional revenue can help offset and support families of hardship with sports fees. Two, with sponsorship, the additional funding that is currently declined for budget reasons would be available upon discussion, i.e. new goals, new LSA equipment, et cetera. Three, sponsorship will also assist in the upkeep and maintenance as allowed by the Public Department, costs which could potentially lessen taxpayers' impact.
So as a reminder to voters, we vote on motions, the oral motions that are made during the meeting. If those motions are within the scope of the article, they are permitted. And so that's why you see the slight change in the motion compared to the printed article. Further discussion at the red mic?
Thank you. Mark Gold, 129 Avondale Road. I think what I heard in the motion was that the control of this is going to be under the Parks and Recreation Board to reserve the rights rather than the Parks and Recreation Department. So we're going to turn this over to a group of volunteers who meet infrequently, who may or may not have quorum, and whose, whose membership changes from time to time as opposed to a town department, which I think is, was the original intent and what I thought we saw originally. So I'd oppose this as it's currently proposed simply because the control is under the wrong group of people, in my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Starr?
Larry Starr, D1 Williamsburg. Paul Prestosik and I had a short colloquy a few minutes ago. I spent over 15 years on the high school council, and we had funds that we raised in various areas, for example, vending machines. And the requirement was that we had a revolving fund in order for us, the school, to be able to spend that money. We don't have a revolving fund for this money. If this money comes in, it goes to the general fund, I believe, and is not under the control of Parks and Rec, either the department or the board. Now, there is a revolving fund there now, I should qualify that. But revolving fund money is for services, and it's a question about whether or not advertising would qualify. It's more likely, and we probably are going to need council's verdict, but it's probably such that any money raised from this isn't going to be used for the things we would like it to be used for without, first of all, confirming that the state would allow us to do that because they would treat it as services, and advertising is probably not services. So that may be an actual problem with, with how this is drafted.
Mr. Ray?
Armin Ray, 96 Shady Side Drive. Anticipating that same line of questioning, I propose an amendment, Madam Moderator.
Okay, what's your amendment?
Amendment to Article 41. Any revenue raised pursuant to 6-314 of the general bylaws related to advertising on Long Meadow Park and Recreation Fields be placed into an established special revenue account of the Park and Recreation Department.
All right, could you bring it forward, please? Is there a second? Mr. Ray? Oh, did you want to speak to that? Go ahead.
Just as Mr. Starr had pointed out, that there was no mechanism for the money to be allocated specifically to a special revenue account that had been going into the general fund. I don't think that's the intent of the, the motion, and so I think this solidifies where that money should go within the purview of the Parks and Recreation Department.
All right, we'll discuss the motion to amend first. The motion to amend is, any revenues raised pursuant to 6-314 of the general bylaws related to advertising on Long Meadow parks and recreation fields be placed into an established special revenue account of the Parks and Recreation Department. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? We have a caller.
Larry Starr. Ms. Moderator, is, where is that language going to go in this current warrant article?
At the end.
Will that be a new item three or triple I?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion to amend is approved by majority affirmative vote. We now come to a discussion of the entire article or the entire motion as amended. Yes?
Andrew Burkey, 32 Williston Drive. I am here speaking on behalf of the Park Board. We are, as a board in total, fully in favor of this, in part because it does three things that are really important under the purview of our work. The first is that it provides potentially persistent funding for field maintenance. We have a brand-new field complex coming online in the next few months, a year or so, and it's gorgeous if you haven't been by there, but it will need to be maintained. Otherwise, we're coming back in many years to say, hey, we need another one and a half million dollars to fix it up. And this is a way for us to generate funds that will allow for the consistent maintenance of that field along with many of the other fields in town. One of the things we frequently hear at board meetings are places in which fields need to be improved, and this could allow for the long-term improvement and maintenance of those fields. The other thing that it does is that it allows for partnerships with youth sports, for organizations and businesses in the local area to partner with youth sports in a way that they are not necessarily able to do so now. And we think that that's a good thing, improving our ability to offer sports to more youth in town. And finally, the way that the, the warrant article is written, it allows for a mechanism for consistency. It allows us to design rules that will make consistent advertising, consistent signage, so something on the order of if you've driven by Picknilly Field, everything looks very consistent and uniform there. And these rules allow us to do something like that. And we are in favor for it, or in favor of it, and I hope that you will be too. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Arlene Miller, 68 East Granite Road. Just a question. Does this define exactly which fields can be used? I thought I heard Bliss Park, is that? Could you, could you clarify which fields may be used for signage?
The motion included Wolf Swamp Field Complex, Bliss Park, and Turner Park.
Thank you.
Hello, Walter Gunn, 1579 Long Meadow Street. I would have a question for the building commissioner. We have a sign bylaw, Article 13. It's in the zoning bylaw, and it designates the building commissioner as the sign enforcement officer, which I believe trumps the, the general bylaws. Maybe town council would like to talk to that.
First, we'll see if the building, is the building commissioner here? Oh, there he is. I don't recognize anyone.
Building Commissioner?
I don't think it trumps it, Walter.
Okay. Okay, thank you, good.
And, okay, so I guess you're out, Jesse? You skipped.
Margaret Racus, 67 Shady Side Drive. I'm the current chair of the Park Board, and as Andrew said, we support this amendment. I would just like to point out to the community that we are appointed by the select board. We have monthly meetings with the quorum, and if we cannot make the quorum, we, we switch the date of the meetings. And in fact, the select board is presented with copies of our monthly meeting minutes. We are not an absentee board.
Yes?
Colonel John Friedson, 9 Green Willow Drive. Just a couple of comments. First, the success or failure of this, if approved, is going to be in the execution. It can be done tastefully with a consistent look and feel that is attractive and adds to the community, or it can become something that's a jumble and looks poorly and reflects poorly upon us. So ensuring that happens, I don't think is something you can write into the law, but is certainly something those that are entrusted to the aesthetics of it need to be considering going forward. Secondly, is the messages that are being presented...
Do you have a question, sir?
No, it's questions and motions.
Right. Are you making a motion?
I'm getting it.
No, you have to make a motion right now, and then you can speak to it if it's seconded.
I can also ask questions. It says, questions and motions.
So you can ask a question, sir?
Super. What mechanisms will be in place to control the aesthetics and the messaging? For example, we may not want to have divisive political messaging up there on the boards. So how are those things going to be managed? Thank you.
Mr. Pericolosi, do you have an answer for that?
From, from looking at other towns and other communities that we're going to, the Park Board is going to create a separate document that will control that. That document, as obvious, we're going to be limiting, you know, advertisements for guns, advertisements for alcohol and tobacco, advertisement for marijuana and such of those natures. But that document itself will be a separate document that will control those that do want to apply for signs or for sponsorship. They will have to, you know, be in those limitations of what that, that document says that will control the fee, the cost, the size, and the placement of those signs.
Go ahead.
Andrew Burkey, 32 Williston Drive. I just also wanted to comment that there are a number of cities and places in the municipalities in the area that have done something like this, so West Springfield and Picknilly Field, that offer for us a, a prescription of how to proceed. And I'll sort of sideways comment on the aesthetics. There are members of the Park Board that have degrees in graphic design, so I wouldn't worry about that too much.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll come to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor of the motion please raise your yellow cards? Thank you. Would those opposed raise your yellow cards? Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Under Article 42, the lead petitioner has asked me to recognize the select board for the motion that the select board will make on his behalf. This is the motion that he wrote to me in advance. Mr. Gold?
Yes, I move that we, the town meeting take no action on Article 42.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Did you want to speak to it or no? Okay, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of taking no action, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. Those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion to take no action has been approved with a majority affirmative vote. A motion to dissolve the special town meeting is now in order. Is there a second? All those in favor, raise your yellow cards. All those opposed. All right, the motion passes, unanimous affirmative vote. Thank you, folks. The annual town meeting of 2021 is now dissolved. Go and enjoy the sun shower.